Incorporation are really appreciated. The EVA Neighborhood Board is an advisory board. We provide fairness, integrity, and collaboration to all to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under one minute, one turn per person. Those giving reports are urged to keep their reports less than three minutes and presentations under 10 minutes. Please silence all electronic devices. The board will make a good faith effort to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens and an opportunity to provide oral testimony without a physical presence in the physical meeting room. Please ensure that your computer or phone is muted unless you are speaking. The board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote of eight of this 11-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are major importance and will affect a significant number of people.
Thank you. We're gonna have the introduction of board members from my right, starting with you, Alex going down, and then on, uh, is a board member online.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. For the fellow board members, probably Alexander Gauss.
Good evening, everybody. Liam Chin, thank you.
Happy New Year, John Rogers.
Aloha, Corey Rosenlee.
Follow the manufacturer's instructions. Use only the battery charging cord that is designed for the device. Replace all cords that are damaged, frayed, or sticky to the touch. Remember to charge devices in a cool area with good ventilation. Do not keep charging the device after it is fully charged. Larger devices like e-scooters and e-bikes should only be charged outdoors. And if you have smaller devices, they should be placed on a hard, non-flammable surface when charging. Never on your pillow, on your bed, or on a couch. And store your batteries away from anything that can catch fire. Are there any questions?
Any questions on the board? Any? Go ahead, Corey.
Good evening. I'm just trying to follow up from our last meeting. They said they get back to me about looking at what is the buffer zones for areas.
Okay, um, so in the last meeting, we actually, there's a, there's a pamphlet put out by the state of Hawaii. And it is recommended buffer zones depending on what situation you have. So we have the pamphlet. I'll leave, go back, get it, and I'll bring it back. How's that? Okay, no, it's, yeah, if not, yeah, if not this, I'll write a note to bring that back to you. Yeah. Any other questions?
Can email them.
It's actually a hard print.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can look if there is an online one, I'll email it.
That's great.
Yeah.
Any questions from the community? See, I get one real quick. On that battery one?
Yes.
Yeah, my daughter got burned from the, what you're talking about, charging the battery. She slept on it and kind of burned her shoulder, you know?
It gets really hot, the lithium ion. The other thing too is if you have a device that you didn't charge for a long time, if it's completely dead, it's almost no good. They can start to swell and a lot of issues with that. And once it ignites, there's almost like no stopping it until it burns through its process.
I'm glad you said that because I always thought any rechargeable batteries, you burn them all the way down to almost dead to eat, so you get the full charge.
Oh, no, no, like you burn it down, but say you leave it sit for eight, 12 months and it trickles out.
Got it.
When you re, that's why whenever you buy something and you plug it in, there's like at least a quarter charge on it. Because if you let it go down completely, oh, in the charging process, they can swell and damage the battery.
Thank you. Good to know. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Thank you for your service and be safe out there. Okay, moving on to Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, Honorable Chair Member, Chairperson Mitch Tynanis, members of the board, members of the community. The corporal only paying with the Honolulu Police Department District, A community policing. I do have your stats for December. The report looks a little bit different. Please forgive the stats for May 2023 on the top. I've been putting the bigger stats together. I kind of forgot to change that. Anyway, for December, we had 30 motor vehicle thefts in the district, 12 in our area. 21 burglaries, nine in our area, 131 thefts, 31 in our area, 29 unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, six in our area. A total of 326 citations were issued. There's a total of 6,705 calls for service, 1,884 in our area. I know last meeting, there was a question regarding arrests and clearing of stats. Okay, after months of search, what we found out was it's hard to give you any numbers other than what's on the website because the way our numbers are reported and the way that the FBI reports them are totally different. For example, if someone calls and makes a theft case and we go there and then they decide to drop the charges, we show the case is closed. The FBI still shows it as a theft case, so it doesn't show that closed case. But according to the stats online, if you go to the HonoluluPD.org website, for the stats that we do track on the Neighborhood Board stats, it shows there were it was 2% of the auto theft cases closed, 6.6% of the burglaries, and 9.5% of the theft cases. Again, whether that means there was, for example, the 141 cases closed for the burglaries, whether that means we arrested 141 people or 12 people that were responsible for the 141 or cases were closed because people decided not to pursue it or withdrew their complaint. That's what the 141 comes up. So it's really hard for me to tell you how many cases were actually cleared with the stats. I didn't want to give you something that we had on ours that shows that we cleared 85% and then give you something that the FBI says that we cleared 14%. And then people say that we're changing our numbers. I don't wanna, we don't want to get into that kind of stuff. So basically what my direction was is to tell anyone that's interested in getting the stats for the clearance rates, go to the HonoluluPD.org website. You can go to stats on the dashboard and it shows you what the clearance rates are. That's what we're reporting to the FBI. So I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense and thank you so much for that. We're here in the public safety community that I work in. I'm, we're all excited about that availability. I'm actually on your website now looking at it and we appreciate all the work HPD has put into it. We understand this is also a kind of a first iteration of it and it may continue to improve as more funds come in. We're excited about that. Also excited to talk with you separately about the FBI, what you call the Uniform Crime Reporting System. I've been working with that for a handful of years and I know certain cities report to it while others don't. So yeah, it'd be interesting to see. So are you saying that HPD does not share their data with the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting System because it collects and categorizes and closes in different ways?
No, we do share it with them, but the way that they report, if you looked at our report compared to the FBI's report with the same stats, it'll be different.
Understood.
You know, and for example, even like the unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle, FBI doesn't report on that. They put that as, they classify that as a theft.
Right.
So that's why I don't have a number for the unauthorized entries to a motor vehicle because of the way it's calculated. You know, thefts, even they listed as larcenies and stuff like that. So just the way that things are reported, it's really confusing for me to try to give you that and I'd hate to open up a big old wormhole and try to figure out how to get this stuff for you every month, so.
Great. Last quick question was just, I personally haven't seen very many cities that have had the ability to break down the clearance rate by district, so I'm assuming it probably won't happen here as well. But my question would be, do you, just in your deep experience, would you feel like these clearance rates are generally the same in EVO or do you think it's different? Just your gut?
Honestly, I think ours are probably higher amongst the districts, you know, and I might be just boasting because you know, our crime reduction unit, you know, because we actually do have one of the better crime reduction units. And the amount of cases that they got involved in and have been able to arrest and stuff like that. So I think you know, ours might be a little bit, well, might add to the numbers being higher, to be honest. I mean, you know.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Chair.
Oh, yeah, John.
So with the most recent court ruling that denied the ACLU preliminary injunctions for for stop enforcement on public safety laws, does that mean that you folks will be able to start enforcing park closure rules? Also, is there, is there a plan for, because I think we haven't seen a honu in a while because of that injunction. And so is there a plan to do a honu?
Well, the honu is actually at Kehe Lagoon. So they are actually up and running. They were in Waipahu before then, so that's still going. The latest ruling on the ACLU was basically that we could continue to do what we've been doing. There's a couple of things that have changed what we have to report when we do it, such as just documenting a little better as far as availability or willing to go to shelters and stuff like that. But nothing has changed as far as that's concerned. The biggest, the biggest issue that we are dealing with with the stored property ordinances, the beach cleanups, is the amount of beaches and parks we have in our district. Scheduling wise, and then, you know, in the third week of January, they're doing the point in time count, which is where they go out and actually count the homeless or is residenteally challenged, I'm sorry. So during that time period, we don't do, we don't go and do any enforcement because they want to leave them where they are so they can get an accurate count. So with that, with the weather and stuff like that, it's been one of those things that's slowing us down, but we are still doing what we have been doing.
Any other questions from the board? Corey, go ahead.
Again, just trying to follow up from a conversation we had months ago. Whether to have data on the number of calls we're getting for fireworks complaints and how many of those are actually followed up with?
I can get you, I can get you the stats for how many fireworks calls.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then you keep data from those fireworks calls of how many actually, you know, either lead to arrests or lead to some sort of action after the call?
Yeah, I can get you the, well, we would have the fireworks calls and then any arrests or citations that were issued for fireworks. So I'll get you, I'll get you.
Thank you.
Liam, go ahead.
On the fireworks, meant to ask you if HPD plans to continue setting up in Pulo Beach Park on 4th of July and New Year's, as they've done in the past, which has been very successful at deterring large aerial shows. Was that a sort of a one-time thing when you guys did? Was quite successful? Do you plan to keep doing it?
Yeah, the reason we didn't do it for New Year's was because we realized that New Year's isn't an area where, that's not something that people do. They don't go to parks and set up unlike the 4th of July. So we do intend to still go with the park closure enforcement for 4th of July. If I'm not mistaken, we're gonna do it the same way we did before. We're gonna close the park on the 20, on the 3rd and reopen it the morning of the 5th. That's, that's the plan that I'm understood, that I'm aware of and we're planning to follow.
That's good news. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Okay, go ahead, Corey. Just to be clear, one of the things that I really would like to see is is to see any of the legislation that's happening at the legislature towards fireworks as having any impact. So not just to see the cause, but see it over time, see if that's increasing or decreasing. Because basically there was a task force, they announced that they were, they had, you know, seize some illegal fireworks. They're trying to do that. I'm just trying to see if this is being affected at all or not, so.
I drove from Kailua to EVA on January 30, I mean, December 31st, and I say no.
New Year's Eve is a lost cause. And we've lost that one. I'm just trying to see leading up to New Year's Eve, even afterwards. I have to admit, I do see it after New Year's to be less than it was in the past, and that may just be my own, you know, vision, but I'd like to see if there's any quantifiable data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Any questions from the community? Seeing nobody online with any questions, thank you. Moving on to Weed and Seed.
Again, thank you, Weed and Seed. At this time, I don't have anything in particular to report other than we are still working to try to get back into the schools and we're trying to get our golf program back running, the junior golf program, as well as the water sports program. So we'll let you guys know as soon as we find out. There is a, we did want to, I don't know, I guess gotta go through a procedure, but we did want to do a presentation because we are interested in extending the Weed and Seed boundaries from just the EVA beach area to actually encompass Kalailua up to Costco on the Makai side. So we wanted to do a presentation either next month or the following month, depending on when we can get in.
Okay, I can put them in for next month.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the board for Weed and Seed? Any questions from the community for Weed and Seed? Seeing none, thank you very much. Be safe out there, Corporal. Okay, moving on to board administration and planning. This is approval of regular board meeting minutes for Thursday, November 9th. December, we had a recess, so this is for November 9th, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes.
I second, John Rogers, second.
All right. Moved and seconded, okay, moved. Passed. As read. Okay, moving on to presentations. We have one resolution requesting the Hawaii Department of Transportation, HDOT, to place signage or restripe several of the right turn lanes along Fort Weaver to allow people riding bicycles to use the right turn lane only to proceed through the intersections. John?
Hello, everybody. My name is John Rogers. I'm one of the co-chairs of the EVA Neighborhood Board Transportation Committee and I'm we are proposing this resolution for the EVA Neighborhood Board to approve. And basically, the title of the resolution is requesting the Hawaii Department of Transportation to place signage and/or restripe the right turn only lanes along Fort Weaver Road so that it will be legal for people riding bicycles to use the right turn only lanes to transition the intersections. And so why are we, why is this important? Well, well, why is it important? Because, anyway, I'm gonna go into why that's important and talk about the whole thing, but some of the background to this is that this was proposed legislation for the last three years. In 2021, SB 5581. In 2022, SB 2299, and in 2023, HB 930. And actually, two of our legislatures, Senator Favella and David Alcos supported some of this. They were, they were, what do you call it? They were, they actually put, introduced the legislation with other people. So that's where this came from. It's a thing that cyclists, people who ride bicycles, we, we, it comes a dangerous place, the shoulder lane, when all of a sudden it ends at an intersection where there's a right turn only lane. Go ahead to the next slide. So in our traffic code, 291, the definition of a bicycle is right there. And basically, the key part of this is a bicycle is a vehicle defined by HRS 291. And a vehicle is a bicycle defined in another portion of HRS, the Hawaii Revised Statute. So being a vehicle, a bicycle has the rights and obligations of a vehicle, right? And what that means is that it's gotta follow all traffic signals and signs and striping. It's gotta ride on the right-hand side of the road with traffic. It's gotta, it's gotta I'm sorry, I'm not really good at this. It yields for pedestrians, so it's gotta do all the things a vehicle does. And so that's an important fact in this matter because what happens with bicycles when they're in shoulder lanes is we break the law a lot because, and I'll show you this in a few minutes. Can you, can you go one more time? Okay, you got the bike route. Okay, so in Fort Weaver, no, the, it's okay. So Fort Weaver is a designated bike route. And so that's, and that's what I defined bike route here just to show you that Fort Weaver is a designated bike route. If you go down Fort Weaver, you will see signs that say bike route. And so that means that the state has intended bicycles to ride on the road on Fort Weaver. They just haven't done everything that they need to do. So yeah, on this, on this sign, I'm gonna just show you what this is. This is Fort Weaver at the intersection of Colawaka. Starting from the top, you know, you see the white section, that's a side. I don't know, it's that sidewalk up there and then the right turn only lane going in. And then you have three lanes of through traffic and then of course, two lanes of left-hand turn. So go ahead and one more click the yellow box. So in this yellow box, it just shows you that the part that I'm talking about is this right turn only lane. So normally, that top little dark section where the line is, that's the shoulders, a six-foot shoulder. We have these wonderful shoulders on Fort Weaver. They should be bike lanes. In fact, in 2019, this body asked, when they repaid Fort Weaver, this body asked the state to make those all bike lanes and they just ignored us. So now the next thing to do is just do a little bit of striping and signage. So that little, that six-foot lane is perfectly safe for a bicycle to ride. And normally, bike lanes are between four and six feet. So that's, it's a good way, or if they're buffered, they can be seven. So what happens is a bicycle will come in and will be on the shoulder and then as the white, right turn lane starts to show up, the bike will, the bicycle has to, the person riding a bicycle has to move over into the right turn only lane. And then in order to transition the intersection legally, the bicycle has to move into the travel lane at the, you know, right before the intersection or sometime before the intersection and to get in. So everyone's been on Fort Weaver. You know, you drive 35 plus, right? It's a speed limit of 35 and people, you know, drive faster than that. So getting in that travel lane can be hard to do. I mean, even the most experienced cyclists have a hard time getting that travel lane. So what we do is we move over into the right turn only lane and you see that little triangle that's right there. Right there. That's the place that we can sit and if the light's red, we can wait there and wait for the light to change and then we would transition the intersection. Next slide. Okay, there, here, this is a street view from Google. So here, the six-foot shoulder lane, the right turn only lane, and then the trans lane. And you can see that that getting in the travel lane would be, you know, it's a whole different thing. So this is how we look right now currently. So this is, the next slide is gonna be what it, what it could be. And so this is in Maui, Kiliulani Highway and Kehe, Kihei, Maui. It's a different view of it from what Fort Weaver is, but basically, from the top, you have two travel lanes and a shoulder lane, two travel lanes, the median, and then two travel lanes, and then the right turn only lane, and go to the yellow box. And so this is what it could look like, is where the right turn only lane gets gets a little bike guy and a little indicator to show that, okay, this is where bicycles should be riding if they're gonna transition the intersection and keep on going forward instead of turning right. And added to this, the next, the next sign, the next, the next slide. So this is the sign, the sign that says, I can't see from here. Begin, begin, yeah, begin turn lane, yield for bicycles. So this is what it could be. They add a sign, they add the little guys on the roadway. You know, right now, it would be just really easy for them to do. And so when the person riding a bicycle enters the right turn only lane, they can just, they move in, right, and they're able to transition an intersection with everyone knowing what they're gonna do. The motor vehicles know what they're gonna do, the bicycle knows what to do. And it's a much safer situation than it is right now. Okay, so good. Next, next one. Okay, all this is, is, this is the 2003 Bike Plan Hawaii, Chapter 7, 74, and this is, this is in their book. So in 2003, they wrote this. And basically, they're showing that through an intersection, the next box, the next slide. And in the writing above this diagram, it basically, how come it's cut off? So where adequate road spaces available, bike lane type striping through intersections is recommended even in the areas with shoulder bikeways or wide bike curbs. So they already have it in their plan that this is how they should design intersections that have right turn only lanes. So that was, that's my point with this. We're ready to mahalo and.
You want me to go ahead and read it, John? Sure. "All right, requesting the Hawaii Department of Transportation to place signage and/or restripe the right turn only lanes along Fort Weaver Road so that it will be legal for people riding bicycles to use the right turn only lane to transition the intersections. Whereas the EVA Neighborhood Board 23 is committed to addressing the issues and concerns of neighborhood residents. And whereas Fort Weaver Road and north-south collector roadway and signed bike route is a multi-lane divided highway with right and left turn only lanes, Fort Weaver Road provides great ingress and egress to EVA and EVA Beach neighborhoods to and from Cunia Road, Farrington Highway, and H1 Freeway. And whereas Fort Weaver Road has six-foot shoulder lanes and is signed for a 35 mile per hour speed limit between Farrington Highway and Cunia Drive in the northbound and southbound directions in which the shoulder lanes end abruptly at the following intersections due to right turn only lanes. La Blandui Street, southbound, Ava Drive, northbound, Old Fort Weaver Road, southbound, Child and Family Services driveway, southbound, Karayon, Karayon Street, southbound, Zippy 711 driveway, southbound, Renton Road, both directions, Colawaka Drive, both directions, EVA Town Center driveway, southbound, Geiger Road, southbound, Iroquois Road, northbound, and Kinnui Drive, both directions. And whereas HRS 291 C1 defines a vehicle as every device in or upon or by which any person is or property is or may be transported or drawn upon a roadway or highway, including mopeds and bicycles. And whereas HRS 291 C31 requires the driver of any vehicle to obey the instructions of any traffic, official traffic control device applicable thereto placed in accordance with law. And whereas people riding bicycles in the shoulder lane on Fort Weaver Road and entering one of the above-mentioned intersections with the intention of proceeding through the intersection must enter the right turn only lane and then transition to the travel lane before reaching the intersection to lawfully travel through the intersection. And whereas people riding bicycles may find it difficult and/or fear for their safety entering the travel lane on Fort Weaver Road, since the roadway is often congested with motor vehicles traveling faster than 35 miles per hour, and people driving motor vehicles are not expecting people riding bicycles to enter the travel lane at the above-mentioned intersections because, because there is not sufficient signage to inform people driving motor vehicles that they will be sharing the travel lanes with people riding bicycles. Now therefore, be it resolved that the EVA Neighborhood Board Number 23 requests that the Hawaii Department of Transportation place signage and/or add striping to the above-mentioned intersections so that it would make it legal for people riding bicycles to use the right turn only lane to proceed through the intersections. And be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution be transmitted to the Director for the Hawaii Department of Transportation, Deputy Director for the Hawaiian Department of Transportation Highways, Hawaii State Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator, State Sustainability Coordinator, Director and Deputy Director of the Coordinator, Director and Deputy Director of the Department of Transportation Services, Honolulu Department of Transportation Bicycle Coordinator, Honolulu Pedestrian Safety Coordinator, Honolulu's In Vision Zero Coordinator, Hawaii Safe Routes to School and State Coordinators, Hawaii State Senator for District nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, Hawaii State Representatives for Honolulu District forty, forty-one, and forty-two, Honolulu City Council Representatives for District one and nine, Mayor for the City and County of Honolulu, Hawaii, and Hawaii Bicycling League Executive Director. And so we're gonna be adopt voting to adopt whether it's adopted by the Ever Neighborhood Board, that's regular meeting. Go ahead, it's.
Thank you. Yeah, I need a motion and a second to support this resolution.
I'd like to move.
Hold that, Jana.
Oh, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Open for discussion. Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, I just had one comment and I I know I looked this over with you, John. I I guess the one thing I have it, I just want to comment on and maybe we can even just tweak it right here is, should we be asking for signage and or marking on the road? Don't we want and? Don't we do we want? I think we should ask for both. That's just my thought. I'm curious to. I definitely think the markings on the street are the more most important. That's what I feel is the most important.
My my reasoning for that is the and or is because I don't know exactly, like, there's different examples all over the islands of of how they do this. So I was giving them the option, if if it's cheaper for them just to put markings on the road and they can do that tomorrow. But I mean, I agree with you, the and is better. We need the signs to.
Has that?
I can motion motion to make accept the resolution as written with the following changes, change it any and or to and.
I second that motion.
All right, any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Trey Gardner calling in. Can you hear me all right?
Go ahead, Trey.
Thank you. I'm I'm sparing all of you hearing me cough all night with the latest that my little one has brought home from daycare. So I'm in I'm in strong support of this motion. I think one of the reasons for bikes driving on the sidewalk illegally so much in in Eva as we've talked about at past meetings is because cyclists don't feel safe on the road as it's currently laid out. So I think anything that we can do to make them feel safer is going to cut down on those sorts of conflicts with pedestrians on the sidewalks. The one thing that I want to ask, John, is in your study of the bicycle plan, did you see anything else that would that you think would enable us to potentially ask for more, if not now, than later on? Because I'm wondering, sharos may not be sufficient to make people feel safe with cars going at thirty five miles an hour. And as you point out, there are there are generous shoulders on much of or much of Fort Weaver, and it may be possible to put in something more substantial like protected bike lanes with with those barriers and at least part of the route. Do you have any thoughts on that, John, or any any response from your research with the bike plan?
Sure, so the bike plan Hawaii that was just re it was like updated twenty nineteen, but it was written in twenty two thousand and three. It shows that a state plan is to put bike, just regular bike lanes, because there's a six foot. So they're they're not doing anything protective. I agree with you. I mean, there's no reason. So normally, like a buffered bike lane is seven feet. There are our Fort Weaver lanes, I think they're eleven feet, so they could take one or two of the lanes and bring them down to ten, and then that would give them the extra feet to add add the buffer, make a five foot bike lane with a buffer, and then they would have room for stanchions. So there is a way to do it, but I I don't I I it's not in their plan right now, so we would have to get the that changed, I guess.
Okay, thank you, John. I just wanted to note, I I support that as well, if we could get a resolution about protected bike lanes at some point.
Okay, thank you, Trey. Alex, you got something?
Yeah, I just want to, obviously, one of the major issues here in Eva is traffic, right? I don't I don't think the public would be in accordance with the removal of a lane to accommodate bikes. Okay.
I gotta talk into my, sorry.
Yeah, I don't mean taking away a lane, yeah, no way. We need three lanes up Fort Weaver. No, it would be so they're doing a lot of like even H one highway now has ten foot lanes. I mean, so they're bringing them down to slow down traffic, so it's a good measure to slow down traffic. And so taking an eleven foot lane and making it a ten foot lane hopefully slows down traffic. I don't think it does, but and then it gives you an extra foot for.
Thank you, Jana. You got something, Jana?
Yes, are we speaking on the resolution or was it just the amendment?
We're just commenting commenting on the resolution with the amendment.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to say that I first and foremost support this resolution. I think it's a great step towards making Eva more bike friendly, especially Fort Weaver, a more bike friendly, I guess, route of transportation for our cyclists and our motor vehicles. I also just wanted to touch upon what Trey was saying about it'd be great to in the future have something to support, like protected bike lane bike lanes and just supporting just transportation using your bicycles in Eva in general. So maybe that's something that we can look into the future, but for now, I'd just like to encourage the board to support this resolution so that we can kind of like start with these smaller efforts to build towards that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? DCI? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. We have three more board members. I would like to for them to introduce themselves. We have Julie, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Julie Reyes.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jana and I'm the secretary.
Trey, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, I'm Trey Gardner, I'm the treasurer.
So we have a total of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. All right, ten out of eleven. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number five, residents and community concerns and community announcements. Anyone has a concern or announcement, please step up to the mic, state your name, either your concern or your announcement, please. We'll take community members first or next, but please step up to the mic. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kenny Liu. This is regarding the cluster on Pohawkapuna Road. For those of you who haven't been on Pohawkapuna, excuse me, Pohawkapuna Road for a while, our sign campaign started about a month and a half ago. We are letting the developer know, hi, guys, I know you're watching, that if they continue with this project as proposed, we will be humbly asking potential buyers not to purchase a unit. By purchasing a unit, prospective buyers will be supporting a project the community is strongly against. It will be very difficult to assimilate into and feel welcome in a into a community you just went against. As for investors, all the ones I've met with and worked with over the years are looking for a good return on their money, both short and long term. It would be risky and even foolish to purchase in the cluster if potential tenants don't want to live there. People would be much better off buying an Ocean Point or Gentry. We just started putting signs in the yards of houses that back up to the lot facing into the lot. This is to let the developer know if they build this monster development, once built, those signs are going up over the fence. So potential buyers, that's the first thing they're gonna see. In talking with my neighbors on my side of the lot, we're discussing running signs from the street to the ocean. That's about fifty sheets of plywood running approximately four hundred feet with that big red writing, asking them to please not move there. Recognize that behind every sign is a house full of people ready to come into the street to protest. We are a highly motivated group of individuals in this for the long haul. One of our team members is making a website that explains the cluster, the negative impacts, and the community's objection to it. We will we will be attaching the web address to our signs. The other thing to consider is, we're just getting started. We're still figuring out what works and what doesn't, but our numbers are growing and we're getting more cohesive. We propose a win-win solution while the project is still in the environmental impact statement phase. In fact, an email from the architect states, we are still actively working on looking at redesigning the project to post-impeer construction. We feel and agree, now is the time to have the developer listen to the community and revise their plans to a reasonable number of single-family homes, one that won't have such a negative effect on our community. In closing, we believe our concerns are reasonable. In fact, we know the developer can still make money with single-family homes without a negative impact on the community. It can be a rational rational and equitable compromise. I want to let you guys know, we're not going away. This is our home. These are homes that many of us plan to pass to the next generation, so let's find a path forward that works for everyone.
Thank you. Any other announcements or concerns from the community? Thank you. Please step up to the mic and state your name and your concern or announcement, please. Anybody else?
Aloha, Tara Rojas. My still same concern is for one, our vaee, our water in this Ahupua'a. I wanted I know it's gonna come up later, the Eva Gentry portion. So with the fifty million gallon leak that was mentioned at the last meeting, if there's any updates on that, as well as just how you said, you know, traffic is a really big issue in Eva and just all of the upcoming developments, you know, how that's gonna affect our vaee, as well as the sewage and just, you know, traffic and in general. So that's my concern, these developments that are coming up. Mahalo.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, aloha, Mike Kako. My name is Moleka Malu Maluumu, Lea Enno Nathaniel Hicks. To the uncle, I ride with you, uncle. A'ole to that cluster, a'ole to all developments that cause degradation to our aina, our vaee, and our natural resources. And all the developers that are watching this right now, please know that you are incurring war crimes. Occupation does not transfer property, so you guys cannot be building anything, any any tax map key that you guys hold is null and void because the heirs and lineal descendants of Hono Uli Uli Ahupua'a, they're coming back. So listen to the concerns of the community, listen to the concerns of Hawaiian subjects, listen to the concerns of native Hawaiians, protect our vaee, protect our Kanaka Maoli people, protect all of you, our kama aina, and protect our land. Mahalo.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the community? We got one more on online real quick. Susan, go ahead.
Yes, Susan Gorman Chang, part of the Shut Down Red Hill Coalition, and I want to thank the Ever Board for being part of making history because as of last week, all thirty-three neighborhood boards passed a resolution to permanently drain, shut down, close, and remediate the jet Red Hill jet fuel storage facility and the aina surrounding aina. And we're gonna be having a celebration sometime in March or April at a park to thank all the neighborhood boards for supporting this rego. And to my knowledge, this is the first island-wide resolution because we all drink water. So that's kind of historic. I also wanted to thank especially Alex and Liam. I was reading this article in Civil Beat about the work you're doing about the lead in the shooting range right next to Catalina Beach Homes. It was a great article and I really appreciate what you're doing and and sounds like fighting a good fight and trying to get the the military to take some responsibility. I appreciate that. And then third, I am one of the ten members of the Elected Community Representation Initiative to be meeting with the Navy and the EPA during the defueling and remediation of Red Hill. Unfortunately, we we have a meeting, our next meeting is January eighteenth at five at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Unfortunately, the Navy has stopped communicating with us, the CRI, and we have been told they will be a no-show there. So we're very disappointed about that because the whole point of this Community Representation Initiative was to to communicate and bring the community's concerns to the Navy during this whole process. And last, I emailed all of the members of this board, the EPA investigation on the testing they did at residences, and they did find total petroleum hydrocarbons in drinking water in residences. And I just want to reiterate, there is no safe level of diesel, of gasoline, of jet fuel in anyone's drinking water. There is no safe level. No one should be ingesting that, inhaling that as vapors. And so that is an ongoing fight as the Navy indicates that there's something they call an environmental action level that is not protective of health. Environmental action level is a level above which they have to take action to remediate. So it is not a health level. It doesn't mean the water is safe. So mahalo.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to Jeannie, you got something? Okay, go ahead. Then we're gonna move to Jana.
Hi, Mitch, thank you. Happy New Year. Aloha, Ever Beach Board members. I have more of a not concern, but more of a request, but I wanted to first say thank you guys for your time volunteering for being on the board. Thank you for your community service, everyone. I wanted to kindly ask, being that we're in an election year, if this board would be able to host a candidate forum, Mitch? I know I asked you previous years before, and so I would like to request, make a formal request for that, being that we have it's so great that we have so many new candidates coming up from our community. And so that if the board would be able to host a candidate forum to give our community time and a place to be able to meet prior candidates and new candidates as well, I would I would like to formally make that request for all, of course, for all candidates would be invited, if you folks do, the all candidates that are running for any part of our Ever Beach community, if you guys could think about hosting a candidate forum. That is my request.
What would what would be?
Go ahead, John.
What would be your recommendation of when that should happen, the month?
Next month or April or May? Yeah, give them some time, give them some time to get ready. Because we have mail-in ballots that come up before the August election, right? So we want to get it done so that people will get a chance to know the candidates and then to go on and do their diligent research after getting to know the candidates. So maybe one of the reps can tell us, August election? Sorry, I'm not in it. I'm I'm not in it, so.
I'd rather try to find out when the when the candidates last day for sign, then we know who running, huh?
Yeah, that too.
Yeah, then we can kind of figure out what date that month we're gonna.
Good one, Mitch. And.
June first?
And then kind of as soon as possible after that because we get mail-in ballots that's coming out even before the August election, right?
Probably June then. Okay, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, you got something?
Yeah, I just want to say, Jenny, that I fully support that request. I think it's a great opportunity. I haven't been a part of that since I've been on the board, and so I would really love to say that for see that, so thank you for suggesting.
Thank you, Alex. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Jana, you got something? And then Julie? Sorry about that, Julie.
I just had a question for Kenny, if that's okay?
For who, Jana?
Oh, for Kenny.
Oh, Kenny. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I just had a question. I just had a question about. Or did Julie have something? Okay. Was there any update regarding what was going on with the EIS or the development? I I wasn't here actually at the last meeting, so I wasn't sure if there is anything mentioned between October and now.
The the draft, it.
The draft, it had, the draft EIS hasn't been published yet. The architect is doing some redesign, but they haven't really told us that much. They said they're looking at post-imperial construction so as not to raise the grade of the lot. But we're not really sure. You know, we don't have anything definitive. I've gotten a brief email. I can send those to you if you wish.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, it really doesn't say much.
I think that says a lot on their part then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Hi, Julie Reyes on a board member, but coming up here just as a resident. I'm speaking about the article that came out in Civil Beat yesterday that had pictures of these two guys next to me, Alex and Liam. The article was about, it was titled "Eva Beach Residents Left in the Dark About Possible Lead Contamination From Marines Shooting Range." And the article was talking about them not being able to get the results of a test that Alex had gathered. I think that we kind of already know that when somebody doesn't want to give the results of something, you kind of usually already know the answer. So we're just gonna go along with, yes, we know what the answer is. The answer is probably positive. Then I would say, my question is, you know, if we're gonna look at cleaning up, which should be the big thing. So the action is, we should make the area safe for residents, period, because it's people first over anything. What should we do? We do know that Eva Beach was sugar plantation, right? You guys all know that. And with sugar, the soil is already contaminated with PFAS, lead, oil pesticides already and other kind of things that was already here. So when we look at soil contamination, what are we comparing it to? That's gotta be the question. As we know, the scientists that we have here, you know, you have to have your comparison sample. Common sense is, is that there's gonna be lead and runoff. Why do I know that there's lead? Because I did check to see what ammunition that's used at the facility. The ammunitions are the M855 and the M882, both of which have lead contained in the bullets that's being used currently. You know, so what I'm gonna say is, why don't the feds or the Department of Health test? If not, the governor should step in. Because the Department of Health, if they don't believe it's their job to protect public health, then what else are they there for? They have to be the first line to protect us. And they have to be empowered to take action and not only when people say, "I did something wrong, can you test me and check?" They have to say that we now know that there's indication that we have to check. So the Department of Health should come out and check. And that's it. So I'm hoping that we can act now. And I do want to say that I'm also glad to hear all of these residents that have come up, that have asked for community action, because if anything that the board is here for, it is to gather residents and make them have community action and teach them how to have community action, knock on doors and get them to, get them to get the residents involved in anything that they're interested in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other community announcements or concerns? I got one, quick one for the corporal. The corporal Pagan. Can I ask you one, because it just popped back into my mind about this? Two things.
I should have left it.
No, I heard, you know, with elections coming up and stuff like that. For HPD, if you had a extra tool in your pouch, change of a law, adding of a law, something to help you guys with any of this, any problem that's happened, major problems that's happening in our community, what would that be?
Good on, only one.
Well, just one. I don't like to say top three, but.
Honestly, I know this wouldn't happen, but I think if there was anything that we could do to help crime, it would be when someone goes to court, the officer is there to discuss with the judge before they make their decision. Because a lot of times that we have, you know, because we've talked to Augie, we've talked to David, you know, we've talked to everybody necessary, that we don't need more laws. We just need the enforcement of the laws, you know? And the problem is that, you know, before, when we were younger, people used to be afraid of the police because what happened after you got arrested, wasn't just the arrest, was what happened after you got arrested. So you went to jail, you know, you paid the fine and stuff like that. So I think a lot of the lack of respect towards law enforcement is because there is a lot less of the punishment for whatever reason, whether no more jail space or, you know, oh, it's inhumane to do this and stuff like that. But that's where it falls back on the police and people say that, oh, the police not doing their job. But, you know, we do our part, we arrest them, and if they're released for whatever reason or they're, you know, pending and stuff like that. Of course, everybody looks at, well, the police let them go. You know, that's not really our responsibility. So if we could actually have a say and the judge would take into account, because, you know, how many times have we arrested the same guy over and over again for stealing bikes from kids at Elima? You know, and he goes to jail and he comes right back out and he goes and steals another one. You know, so those are the kind of things that I wish we could have that opportunity. But other than that, again, you know, I mean, there's so many things that only having one, it would be like the genie with the three wishes, yeah? My third wish, I can wish four more wishes. But thank you though, I appreciate that question.
Thank you, corporal. All right, moving on. Sir, nobody, nobody else? Nobody else? Senator, you got something? Go ahead.
Yeah. On this legislative session, we're gonna look into the judiciary and geographic restrictions of multiple arrests and coming back to the parks, the community, that there be, I don't use the word nuisance, but a problem or always consistently making law enforcement look like they're not doing their job. So as legislators, we need to do our job and have the judiciary have a little bit bite. And I talked to Corporal Paul Pagan before and HPD doesn't, the law doesn't have any bite. So they keep going in and out, in and out. And everybody thinks HPD's kuliana, but for all of us in the community, not just at the legislation, as individuals, you guys should be putting pressure on the judiciary system and lobby them or make a resolution to lobby them to have more consequences for the frequent flyers in a community that constantly steal from our kids, Akapuna, and just the community in general. But that's why we're gonna be working with my colleagues in judiciary, trying to make stricter restrictions to have HPD be able to enforce the law and have some kind of bite.
Thank you, Senator. We have another board member online. He has his hand up. Go ahead, Wayne.
Thank you, Chair. This is also to Corporal Pagan. I wanted to let everybody know that maybe about two weeks ago, Corporal Pagan and his officers from District 8 came out to Ho'opili to help us slow the traffic down. And we had a rally there that was put on and sponsored by DR Horton. And we really appreciate Corporal Pagan and the police officers in our area. And as the creator of Back to Blue Hawaii, I am willing to help Corporal Pagan or HPD to lobby, you know, the legislature or the mayor's office or whoever and get out there and support, you know, them so that we have laws that really matter, that will put criminals behind bars. So I just wanted to say thank you to Corporal Pagan and HPD. Mahalo. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Wayne. Okay, moving on to other monthly reports, we have Hunt VA Clinic. Update?
Well, first off, Happy New Year, everybody. I hope you get into 2024 on a good note. Hope you had a great holiday season. Good evening, members of the board, members of the community. Tony Gaston from the Hunt Companies, and I haven't been here for a couple of months. Well, yeah, we had Christmas off and everything, and a lot has happened in the last two months. And so you guys are gonna be amazed with this one here because if you take a look, this is the VA clinic now. It's done. Parking lot's finished. This is exterior view. But what essentially happened on January 3rd, the Hunt Companies were able to turn it over to the VA Pacific Islands Healthcare System and they officially assumed residency of the VA clinic. And now, in this video here, what you're gonna see is the transition that was occurring. This was the actual groundbreaking, not groundbreaking, but blessing ceremony that the VA team had. Check, check this out. The VA team began activating, activation of the clinic now. They're starting to mobilize their equipment in and everything. And they're slated to still open this in the first half of 2014. You can see the people walking inside. Look how nice it looks now, yeah? Yeah, so things went very, very well. Again, now the VA team is in there mobilizing all their equipment. And again, the clinic is scheduled to be open in April of this year. Now, because of that, oops, hold on. In order to officially open the clinic, there are some roadways that we gotta make sure are open also. So this interior road that you see here was just finished and paved over. This is what we call our interior access road. It's gonna provide access to the VA clinic as well as the future Gentry Homes. It was paved. All that's needed left is some little bit of finishing work now. Now, in order to get to this road though, because we haven't opened all the other roads yet, this portion of Kamakila is gonna be open. It's been striped and everything. So what you're gonna see after that, there was some barriers that will prevent people from driving down below that. And the only reason is because there's still a lot of remedial work that is ongoing on all the roads. Once that remedial work is finished, then all the rest of the roads will be open, except for one, and that's Copahai. But I really do, I'll be quick, I have some good news on Copahai. In December, we were able to meet with the United States DOE and got their approval. Yay. So now it's just finalizing everything with the state DOE. That's the quick update I had. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for the board? Any questions for the community? Anybody online? Nope, nothing. All right, Danny, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Gentry Homes update? Any representative from Gentry Home? No update for today? Okay. Moving on to Haseko, any update?
Hi Mitch, this is, and board members, this is Christine Bayani from Haseko Hawaii. On behalf of Lisa and I, who couldn't be present tonight, we don't have an update this month, but we will have something to update next month. Just wanted to report that.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Go ahead, wait, Corey, go ahead.
I have a question for you. I was talking to a member in Kuniya, and they were talking about in Kuniya 2, Royal Kuniya 2 Development, that right behind their house, there is a sign that says a warning of dioxin. And I just wanted to know whether or not Royal Kuniya, I'm sorry, Haseko is aware of that contaminant, what you guys are doing about it, and whether or not before building Royal Kuniya 2, the environmental impact statement is approving those new homes even though you have a dioxin warning?
Okay, I'm not able to answer that, but I will make sure I take that back to Lisa and then she can report back to that on next month's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to DR Horton, Ho'opili, they called in saying no report for this month. Moving on.
Hey, Chair, they're doing this huge construction, DR Horton, behind Sing Park, behind by Gentry, new housing. And I'm just, I think last meeting I asked that we get a report on what exactly that is because it's a lot bigger than I expected it to be. It even seems like it's going on Navy land. So I just, I don't think it is, but I mean, it's a huge hole that they've dug and all the dirt's gone up to DR Horton and they got concrete.
I think that's that overflow ditch, is it that, that over, covert, that overflow for the water?
It's for storm drain, but it's way, it's huge. And so I'm just curious when it's gonna be done, what.
Okay, update, got it. Storm drain behind a sing park. I will ask them to give an update on that. Okay, moving on to government officials. First, we have US Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Thanks, Chair. Good evening, Chair, board, community. Colonel Bevan could be here tonight, sends his regards. He's traveling this week, but he will be at the next one in February. From Marine Corps Base Hawaii, to all of you, Happy New Year. Do a little, do something a little bit different tonight than usual, because there's not much by way of updates. It's really to start the year off right, on the right foot with some gratitude to some folks that have kind of helped Marine Corps Base Hawaii out. First, to Senator Favela, we're getting MCBH, Department of Transportation Services and Kapalina Management together, working on the public transportation through PRTF on Cormorant Road. Still working on plans. Once those are finalized, those will be announced to the board as usual. Rep Martinez for the work on PRTF and helping us get the sampling plan across the finish line. And to the community, thank you for your patience and understanding. I don't know if you guys feel the same way, but for me, 2023 was a long year, so I appreciate it. And Marine Corps Base Hawaii, either myself or Colonel Bevan will continue to come to these boards, share information with you and be present. And then that's all I've got from the Marine Corps tonight.
Thank you. Any question for the board? Any question for the community? Hey, one, step up to the mic, your name and a question, please?
I have a question for Representative from Marine Corps Base Hawaii in regards to the Civil Beat article that Ms. Julie spoke about earlier and not providing the results of the. Do you folks, do you folks have any reasoning why the results of that testing wouldn't be made to the public? And especially because it was paid for with public funding?
So it was not Marine Corps Base Hawaii's test? I have no knowledge of the test or what was tested, who paid for it. You'd have to ask, I think Alex might be a good POC, but it was not the Marine Corps test.
Yeah, hey Jenny, that, so that test was actually financed, it was under the purview of Rose Martinez's office and her Chief of Staff, Tracy Arakaki, and it was paid for with state funding from her legislative allowance. I think that's what it's called.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I thought you folks had knowledge about the testing. I appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
I do have a follow-up on that. Did they share the results of those tests with the Marine Corps Base Hawaii?
I'm not aware of any tests, results.
Any other questions for the community? Liam, you got something? Okay, go ahead, Liam.
Jordan, just a quick update question. I'm curious, back in July, you had mentioned that you had reached out to the FAA and they were doing their modernization flight plan, just to talk about. Guys, do you have any updates on those conversations?
Not from the Marine Corps side.
Okay, and the FAA, did they respond when you reached out?
They did.
They did?
Yep.
Okay, and was that, was that just verbally or is that in writing?
I'd have to go back and check. I'm sure I might have some emails or something, but I have spoken to people on the phone.
Yeah, okay, was, is it an ongoing conversation or is it, was it a one-time thing where he's trying to get a sense of?
Yeah, I have not reestablished contact with them in probably quite a few months, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Seeing other questions, thank you very much. Oh, you got one. Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, Tara Rojas. I have a question. So by next meeting, February, can you have the answers to these questions?
To which question?
To the FAA and then regarding the test result?
The test was not the Marine Corps's. So that answer is no, but yeah, I can definitely provide an update on the FAA. Well, actually, the FAA, I can provide a perspective from the Marine Corps, but the FAA would have to provide a perspective from their area of expertise, yeah.
Okay, mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Julie, you got something?
Hi, I just want to say one thing. I know that the Marine Corps, I don't know if it was you specifically, has come here several times and you guys say that you want to be good neighbors. You know, I'm a teacher in Nanakuli in Homestead and I now got out of teaching math for 15 years to teach Hawaiian history and participation in democracy, political science. And the one thing that I talk to the kids about, especially the Hawaiian kids out here, is, you know, the. is, you know, the, the thing about being a good neighbor, or we say things a little bit different, but when your neighbor is telling you they're scared, when the neighbor's telling you they're worried about their health, that's not a good neighbor. So, you know, it's simply like, it's, it's just as simple as that. You know, if, if these, if the member, the people that's living around you are telling you that they're scared, then without all these tests and the technical terms and all these, these books and, and people, all these other things, maybe this, that's good enough that you guys just need to test if you guys want to be, be a good neighbor.
Yes, so we, we are testing. It'll be the first quarter of this year. We have all the supplies, we have a lab, we have the contract in place, so we are going to test the frontage from the backside of the berm down to the high watermark of PRTF. Once those results are in, I will share those results with the board, with the community, yeah.
But that's the technicality, so like if that part is not good enough for the residents and they want to make sure that it's an extensive one for their safety, because after you guys cycle out and leave, after you guys PCS and leave and cycling new people, these guys will still be here.
Sure, yeah, that's, that's understandable, yeah, I understand, yeah.
Good, thank you very much. Moving on. US Navy?
Aloha Chair, good evening, Happy New Year to everyone. Danny Hayes with Navy Region Hawaii. I sent in the full report earlier, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights here. And if you all have any questions, please let me know. First, I'd like to say that we have a representative here from the Joint Task Force Red Hill. If there's any additional questions you all might have that, that I'm unable to, to answer. So yes, the last meeting that I was here, I think in November, there was a question about having some subject matter experts here to talk about one of the roads near West Lock. I'm still trying to get the, the subject matter experts together, the speed's together, so please be patient, ask for patience. So the Joint Task Force completed their gravity defueling last month and they completed the unpacking of the pipelines at that point. So they removed more than 104 million gallons of fuel at that, at that time. The next steps, they're all, for the next few months, they'll be transitioning with the Navy Closure Task Force, so they're going to start doing that process in the next upcoming months. The Navy continues with its long-term monitoring information booth with regard to the water system. As a matter of fact, last night at the Capelina Night Market, there was a booth there. So if any residents who are on the water system have questions, that's the best place to get it. They'll help you see how to read the readings that are online to the public and, and answer any questions that you might have. If you have questions about wanting your water tested, if you're on the Navy line, then those are the folks you'll work with. The Defense Health Agency Public Health Department had a webinar and they were able to answer questions with regard to the DHA Red Hill Initiative. So folks who had questions about their health with regard to Red Hill, they were able to call in and have, and ask questions. That seminar was, or webinar, excuse me, was recorded. So Chair, I can, I can give you that link so that if folks have any questions, they can, they can watch that webinar themselves. So pending any questions, that's, that's what I have for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Danny, for the board? Go ahead John.
Thank you for the, getting the update in the future, but it's more than the road, because the Navy's going to expand the whole West Lock annex and we've never really been briefed, we had an EA, we talked about it when the EA came out a couple, few years ago, and we never were really truly briefed on how, what's going to happen, how the fence is going to be built and then of course the road that's going to, bypass road that's going to be put in and what the specs of that road is going to be. So that would be, that would be really what, what would be great to talk about that hole. And actually, there's two environmental assessments, the second one is where the Army builds their own annex and closes Lululele and they bring all their munitions from Lululele down to, down to the West Lock annex. So that would be a nice discussion to, to teach us about what, what exactly is going to happen, how it's going to change things, and that would be great. And then I forgot what I, I'll, okay, I'll come back, let me have another try, once I get it.
Okay, we got two online?
Yes, I'd like to have a conversation with.
Oh, excuse me, who's this?
This is Kaz Ross.
Okay Kaz, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question concerning the closing of Red Hill. I visited before it was closed and I was wondering, there's a plaque that's dedicated to the several individuals who lost their lives while they were building the Red Hill facility. That plaque is placed at the mouth of the entrance into the tunnel. What's going to happen to that plaque as, are those individuals going to be, or that plaque that recognizes those individuals are going to be placed someplace that individuals or people who visit, even though the facility is closed, will know that these people sacrificed their lives to build and finally close off Red Hill?
Thank you for that question. Yeah, so once, once all of the JTF defueling process happens and then they do the turnover, that, that is a good question for the closure team. So once the Navy closure team takes over and does all the remediation, that'll be a question that they'll have to answer and I'll, I'll take that question to them.
Thank you, Kaku, you got something?
Yeah, thank you, aloha Mike Kaku. Is it two minutes, am I asking or what, what, how does this work?
You got one minute?
Oh, one minute now, okay.
And then if you want to ask, ask another question, you can come back on and if we have time.
You know, these lands of Kapu Kaki are the alorio title to the royal families of the House of Keo'ua, which is Kamehameha. I just wanted to raise that awareness on the record for the record, put you on notice. Also, my first question is, was there contaminated soil dumped into the ocean?
Um, I I'm, I'm not aware of any contaminated soil being dumped into the ocean.
Okay, um, I, can I get an email to send in the video footage that I have of boats and trucks, semi-trucks taking contaminated soil to the docks at Ke'ehe? Because I'd like to submit that to, I guess, on the record, because there is contaminated soil on the record and truck drivers were signing non-disclosure statements, not letting the people know and holding them bound by that contract that they cannot tell people, but apparently the video was circulated, that contaminated soil from Red Hill has been dumped by the loads for weeks outside of Ke'ehe. And then my second question, since you don't know that answer, where are or is the contaminated soil being dumped? Thank you, I yield.
Okay, um, thank you for that. I, I'm not aware of any contaminated soil and dumping. I suggest that that might be something to take to Department of Health or DLNR, that might be a state issue. Yeah, that, that's all that I have for that, Chair.
All right, thank you. Susan, do you have something, go ahead?
Yes, aloha Danny. I just, a point of, a question about clarification, so you said the gravity defueling has been completed, but isn't there still 64,000 gallons of jet fuel in there? And now the next phase is more difficult defueling of, because it can't be just gravity defueling, so there's more defueling, is that correct?
Um, so with any questions regarding the defuel, I'll have to defer to the, the JTF subject matter expert here.
And what is his name or her name?
My name is Major Brad Roccacy from JTF Red Hill. Yes, there is still 60, approximately 64,000 gallons of fuel remaining in the facility. 60,000 gallons of that fuel will be removed by JTF Red Hill. That will start in the coming, or next, next week. And then the remaining 4,000 gallons of fuel will be removed by the closure team during the closure process.
Okay, and Major, I have another question. The Community Representation Initiative Committee scheduled the next CRI meeting on January 18th, yet we have been told indirectly that the Navy does, will not meet with us. Can you help me understand why that is?
No, I'm sorry ma'am, I can't, that's a policy decision made by Department of the Navy.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, okay, go ahead.
Tara Rojas, so I have two questions. One, again, it's all about the follow-up. So I wanted to know what's the follow-up and results of the coral, the invasive coral, you know, that? And then the second one, since you know, it's a new year, have you guys thought of since the last meeting and given that there's still 64,000, you know, gallons of fuel left, have you thought of how you're going to provide water to the residents of this community, especially in Capelina that are still affected, you know, for the, for water? Mahalo.
Uh, yes, thank you for the question. So the first part about the invasive octocoral, so they've begun the removal around the Capelina area. So far, from what I understand, it's, it's been successful. The, the concern though is to monitor, to monitor it after it's been removed to make sure that there's no more growing, but I've heard it's, it's been going well. The octocoral itself is, is very delicate, from what I understand. So it, it not only is, is brittle if it, you know, if you try to handle it, but it also, from, from what I was told by some of the divers, it doesn't go in the dark. So like deep water, it's, it's not going to go there. And like underpiers and stuff, it's not going to go there. So that's, that's kind of good news, because that means it's only limited to certain areas. And so hopefully, when they do get rid of it, they'll be able to monitor it better. Now, as far as the, the second question, like I said, the long-term monitoring of the water on the Navy water system, the water's, it's good. It, it's, the tests are public, they're, they're online at the Safe Waters website and at the long-term monitoring booths that they have every second Wednesday of the month at the Capelina Night Market, they'll be able to show and explain and answer any questions that the community might have.
Thank you, any other questions? You have one? Oh, okay, we got one, two, we have this community member stated her name and her question, we go to the two board members, they will move to two more, well, they have, I guess, follow-up questions and then, I think it's Tara, wants one more and then we're going to move on. I don't see anyone else, all righty.
I was just going to say, that wasn't my question, my question was, have you guys thought of how you will be able to provide water for the affected families and residents, especially the school in Capelina Iroquois Elementary, to provide them water? Have you guys thought of a way to provide them water? That was my question, not about, you know, what type of fairs are going to have, information you can find and testing available, no, to provide actual water for them.
So the water that's been used on the Navy water system has been good for the last two years. They continue to monitor it and they continue to provide the test results online for the public to see.
Thank you, ma'am, you have a question? Your name and your question, please?
Aloha, Kelly Nikahau, I am an heir of Hon Uli'Uli' as well as the Red Hill area. There is a treaty that is still inactive today from Kamehameha the third, and it's called the Zachary Taylor Treaty, which the Navy, Army, all military, all four branches recognize till today. I encourage you and all of the military who is here today to please read that, because it is active today. There is dialogue going on today, to today, still today, about the treaty to clean up, not just the Red Hill, but what's happening in Hon Uli'Uli' at this moment and all over into this archipelago, because you have a kuliana responsibility to clean up after your mess. You know, like how we have babies, right? We, as mothers, as parents, we clean up their diapers after them. It was the same thing in that treaty. I'm not trying to get on you, I'm trying to tell you that there is a treaty till today that is still recognized, not just in the UPU, the UN, but in Switzerland, but in here in the United States that recognize that treaty. And if you do, and within that treaty, I'm just going to give a little brief history for Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines. If you do not clean up what you have or what you have done to these islands, you, your lease is up. Now, for the representatives of the mayor and the governor, please acknowledge this. This is our lives, it's not just about the kamakamoli, this is about us people. We cannot live without water. Water prevents our fish, our food, everything we eat.
Thank you.
I understand, thank you very much, but this is something that needs to be done.
Thank you.
We are here to represent our people of the islands, please acknowledge this treaty. I have talked about this many times and many times before. You've come, but this needs to be done. Mahalo.
Thank you. Please respect the time limits. I'll give you guys extra time to talk and stuff like that, but please respect the time limits for everybody. And when you guys are going to ask a question, please direct your question to the chair that was said in the beginning of the meeting. Thank you. Now we have two online, sorry. Or one, Susan, go ahead.
Sorry, Susan, again, yes, Chair and Board, I have sent you a heat map of the data that is on the Navy's own website. And so you can see, and I know I emailed all of you, a big cluster of total petroleum hydrocarbons in Capelina Beach homes by the Navy's own admission. Up to 167 parts per million. At 100 parts per million, you can smell and taste fuel. So my question is, Board members, would any of you give jet water that you know has jet fuel at 167 parts per million to your child, to your baby, to your loved ones? Would you drink it yourself? That is my question. This is the Navy's own data. No answer?
Is that a question for me?
It is a question for you. No, no, to the board, to the board. To any board member.
Hi, this is Julie Reanzona, I do have a child, and the answer is no.
Thank you. Anybody else? Everybody else would like to drink jet fuel?
The answer is no, and just like we said with the lead, there's no safe level known for children and the same with fuel in the water. And I think the people that are making the decisions, the hypocrisy is, they themselves would not allow their children to drink it, so this is, this is where we're at and this is why only through peer accountability are we going to rectify these situations and prevent further ones.
Thank you, and calling the Navy out on this and not pretending everything is okay, I really appreciate you Board, thank you so much.
Thank you, okay, moving on, I think two voice, yeah, Carrie and then John.
Chair, can I respond, please?
Oh, go ahead Danny, sorry about that.
I would say that the, that the Navy is, follows the guidelines of state and federal regulators, so the Department of Health and the EPA, they're the ones who set the standards. The Navy just follows the standards, so that's what I'll say about the Safe Waters website and the information that's on there.
EPA does not have regulations on jet fuel in the water, because jet fuel does not belong in the water, I apologize.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, it's only one question I'm allowing, but this back and forth cannot going to last forever. We keep on going, 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 there's a lot of stuff that we got to cover, sorry, this is a hot topic for everybody. I'm trying to get to the questions through for everybody, but we still have two board members, Corey, go ahead, John, do you still have something? Okay, go ahead, Corey.
So, thank you. This week, the Pearl Harbor wastewater plant released 2 million gallons of untreated wastewater. I have a question for you, so in 2021, the EPA and the Navy agreed that by the end of this year, that the Navy would replace and that the Navy would replace and fix this wastewater plant. So I just want to know, is this on progress to comply with the EPA agreement by the end of this year?
Thank you for the question. First, the first part, it was partially treated. So what that means is there's four stages to the to this particular wastewater treatment plant. And the final stage is where the bypass happened. It's the wastewater treatment plant that's on the Navy is different than the other ones here on the island. It's got more steps. So it didn't hit that last step. And so that's why it was in violation. Because it's the the it's graded a little harder than other wastewater treatment plants here. So as far as complying to the EPA note, they're still ongoing working on it. And I'll have to get that answer for you, whether or not they're going to meet that goal.
So has it been funded?
I I don't have the answer to that. So I'll have to find out. I wasn't with the Navy in 2020.
Is there any construction going on?
I'll have to find out.
Okay.
Wait, okay, John and Liam.
Okay, this is going to change the subject completely. So there's Pearl Harbor Historic Trail ends in Haleiwa at the Admiral's Boathouse. It used to go through the Admiral's Boathouse and all the way into the Arizona Memorial. And then you could go on from there and get to actually a bike lane on Camp Highway. Now it ends before the Admiral's Boathouse. They've got a couple fences up and the Navy did that. I understand why the Navy did that. After 9/11, they closed all that up. My question, we've been trying to, right now with the train starting to run, everything's starting to skyline running. It's very hard to get from skyline to station to the Pearl Harbor Historic Trail. And so which we in years past, we worked with the Navy and they actually had a plan. And they were going to let us use military land and go around the Admiral's Boathouse. And we're, there's a group of us trying to get that thought going. And if you could just as a cry for help, you could see if anyone that you work with is willing to talk with like White Wiscuit League, the city and county to see how we can work together to move forward with connecting this bike infrastructure. Thanks.
Yes, sir. When was the last time you all engaged? You engaged with the with the base about?
This was about a decade ago and the Navy came out with a plan. And then it's been, you know, the city's been engaged. We've been trying to find someone to talk to. I'm just like the volunteer, but there's other people who actually work for a living that have been doing it. Thanks.
All right, I'll check on it.
Thank you. Liam?
Just follow up on Corey's question, Board Member. Corey, regarding the these discharges, whether it's partial or full, there's been many over this last year. What sort of follow-up testing do you do out in the waters of the harbor? Because there are concerns that I receive from my constituents about the currents that move west. So they're moving that whatever untreated affluent is discharged or moves west towards all the beach parks where all the kids are swimming, everybody's fishing. Does the Navy do any follow-up testing of the water to test for fecal coliform and other types of sewage-related dangerous pathogens?
So it's partially treated. I will check to see if there's any testing done. The pipe goes out about a mile and then it's about 100 and a little over 100 feet deep. So it goes out a ways when it's discharged. But I will follow up and find out if there's any actual testing of the water.
Okay, we got one more. Jenny, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to the military members who come to the board meetings and represent the different agencies. We really do appreciate you guys for coming. Thank you. I have a question. When we say, when we use the term good steward and any of the branches can answer personally, what does? What does that mean to the agency that you represent?
So if the question's for me, the military or I'll speak for the Navy, we have laws that we have to comply with. We have to comply with these laws in order to be able to have our training areas, in order for us to be able to keep our bases. So there are laws on the books that we have to comply with, environmental laws. So good stewardship, you know, on the surface is complying with those laws. But our leaders here make sure that every service member understands that this isn't just someplace. It's home. So they try to instill that in the service members. So that's why a lot of folks volunteer on their time. A lot of folks go out into the communities and they don't wear a badge that says they're in the Navy or whatever. They just go out there, they do what they have to do and try to do the right thing in the community. In my opinion, we're not some foreign entity. You know, we are part of the community. Been living here for, you know, generation now. When I was in uniform, out of uniform. So that's that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, a lot of us have family members. My grandfather is buried up at Punch Bowl. And so he joined the Army as soon as right after the bombing of Pearl Harbor. That's like, you know, I just want to recognize that aspect of the community. It's not just like we're like, we're just asking all these things of the military and it's like something like anti-military. No, trust me, I was just on USAjobs.gov today. But if we can reiterate the message back to the agencies that you guys represent, find the people who really willing to listen. I think good stewardship has to do it really listening to the members of the community of the places where we occupy. Then the members of the community realizing that occupation is something we have to live with. And sometimes we even volunteer to serve, family members volunteer to serve, working at the different bases and stuff like that too. We, I think it's like really a relationship that really needs to be reciprocal of each other's concerns. And I think that maybe our government agencies, our military agencies really can do more. Thank you, Mitch. Really can do more for reciprocating their part because we are willing to reciprocate our part.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Mitchell.
And make sure you guys, like I said, got to talk to me.
I'll talk to you next time.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. We're going to move on. Like I said, it's going to be back and forth, back and forth. I understand. Navy is always will be here to answer the questions. You can go online, they have. Do you have an email address as well, Danny?
Yes, I'll provide it.
Can you put it online?
Sure.
All right, thank you. I know they already had a question and then they're going to ask another question and then another. You know what? I'll give her, I'll give them one more time. We have one more, one more question. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. This is how I like to kick off the new.
Kalku, go ahead, go ahead, Kalku.
Mahalo. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. You know, it's really short to be able to ask all these questions and I greatly appreciate that time. So I'll be quick. For everybody present on the record, for the record, Red Hill was placed on the executive order to take the lands of Kapu Kaki for military necessity. However, there needs to be reparation to the families of the Kuliana lands in which was stolen. While we all know there's no treaty of annexation and Hawaii was never made a state of the state union of the de jure, it's actually a part of the de facto. Rather, it's a municipal body corporate whose job is to facilitate peace, law and order for municipal purposes. So with that being said, what is being done to clean the land, to give it back to the royal families or other ways of reparation for the unalienable interest in these lands that is no longer livable? What are the Navy's intent? Sorry, I never heard anything in regards to that in any Kapu Kaki meeting or hearing. Thank you, Ayew.
Thank you. Danny, you got it?
So was the the question about the tank, tank cleanings or?
I think she said, is there any, are you doing any research?
That since the land, yeah, since the land, under an executive order, once that you guys are done discharging whatever remaining fuel that you have left, what intentions or plans are made to put in reparations or a budget for the unalienable interest that was taken from the native families? Because as I stated, the we're not a part of the union. There's no treaty of annexation. It's just an act of Congress through the 1871. And then that was piggybacked with the 1959 Admissions Act. So if everybody isn't aware, this is just me doing my due diligence and the and you are aware, you guys should be aware that we're not part of the de jure, we are part of the de facto. And being as said, an executive order removed the rights of the Kuliana land. So what is the reparation plans for the Navy to honor the royal families of the unalienable interest in the lands that you took?
Thank you.
I'll have to ask that question. I wrote it down.
Okay, though. He's going to take it back and get a get a answer for you for next month.
Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to US Army?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, members of the community. My name is Major Christian. Now I'm the representative for the US Army. I have three announcements to make. The first one is the January Job Fair. The US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on January 16, 2024 at the Ali Manu Military Reservation Gym on AMR, beginning at 8:30 a.m. and ending at 2 p.m. This is open to the public. There will be job offers, provisional hiring, the day of the job fair. Advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com. The second announcement is that the US Army Garrison published a January training advisory for Oahu. If you'd like to be added to the distribution list, please call the community concern line at 808-787-1528. In January, the Army will be conducting training in East Range with helicopter training on the 18, 23rd and 25th of January during the day only. Blank fire training during the day only, 3 to 26 January. Additionally, on Schofield Barracks, there'll be artillery mortar training the 16th to the 19th, 24th to 25th, 27th to 31 January, and aviation training day only, 5 and 10 January. And demolitions training day only, 27th to 28th January. If you'd like to be added to the training advisory list, email at usag.hawaii.comrel@army.mil. There are also some media releases with these dates posted in the back. The last announcement, which is a good news story, is that the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund has announced display dates for the Wall That Heals, the first ever visit to the state of Hawaii in 2024. The mobile exhibit will be on display in Hilo 24 hours a day from January 24 until it's closing on 2 p.m. on January 28. The Wall That Heals exhibit includes a three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial along with a mobile education center. The traveling exhibit honors more than 3 million Americans who served in the US Armed Forces in the Vietnam War. And it bears the names of the 58,281 men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam. Lastly, for any concerns, please call our new community concern line for the US Army Garrison Hawaii at 808-787-1528 or usag.hawaii.comrel@army.mil. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have one question.
Alex, you got something?
Yeah, I was just curious. Thanks for showing up. I was just wondering if you're, are you filling in this month or are you the new rep?
I'm filling in for this month.
Hey Kaz, if you have a question, press the button that says raise hand so we know.
Oh, okay, can you hear me?
Sorry about that. Yeah, because I don't know who's yelling. Okay, go ahead, Kaz.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I noticed that it's going to be in Hilo on Maui, but not on Oahu. And I'm wondering if there any way that us folks on Oahu would be able to have it stop here for a little while?
I can take back that and get an answer for that question.
Thank you.
I think the mobile exhibit is not one boat, so cannot cross. No, 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 just joking. Any other questions for the community? See none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have the representative for Ed, US Representative for Ed Case. Nope. Okay, moving on to Mayor's Rep. Kehau, you on?
Hi, aloha. Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Kehau Pu'u, Mayor's Rep for the city and county of Honolulu. I apologize for not being able to be there in person tonight. I'll see you folks next month. So first, just want to share, I think you folks have access to the Mayor's newsletter there in the room. So just a couple highlights. One, there's a Happy New Year message from Mayor featured in the newsletter. And then our 2023 year in review. So it's a look at city services by the numbers. So I encourage you folks to take a look at it and and learn about what we accomplished in 2023. So November issues, responses to November issues. So item number one, a resident expressed a concern with the speed along Kapolei Parkway near Evo Makai Middle School and asked if there's any potential to have the speed limit drop due to safety concerns. So HPD did make some checks. So HPD officers made checks to Kapolei Parkway near Evo Makai Middle School at various times throughout the day. During their checks, they issued six citations for speeding and they will continue to monitor the area and take enforcement action as necessary. The, we will have the Department of will resubmit this concern for response from the Department of Transportation Services also. Kalamae for it not reaching them this this round. Second concern was about sewage spill effect. So a resident stated that the Halepuno Boys and Girls Club had to evacuate a few weeks prior to the November meeting due to an unknown odor. The resident reminded the board of the sewage spill that took place in February 2023 and claimed there could be potential infrastructure issues to cause orders like this incident and wanted these allegations to be clarified and addressed to potentially find the cause of the unknown order odor. So our Department of Environmental Services made contact with the Boys and Girls Club manager, office manager, Shar Suwan, who stated that the fall odor back in February was traced back to their basement drain. The drain is not in use, so they manually add water to the P-trap to stop the odor from entering the building. And so that's how they've been, I guess, addressing the odor is pouring water into the basement drain to fill the P-trap so that the odor will subside. Environmental Services also spoke to the facilities manager, Damon Nabour, who stated that he didn't recall the odor in February 2023, but in October, they did experience that odor again from that same basement drain. And he too validated that, well, he too shared that the P-trap from the basement drain doesn't hold water. So he pours it into the P-trap so that the smell goes away. So those are pertinent to the Boys and Girls Club. Regarding the sewage spill back in February 2023, so there was a sewer force main break in the area to which the Department of Environmental Services responded and ultimately repaired. ENV collected spilled sewage from the ground and cleaned and disinfected the area. The sewer force main was repaired and a check of the surrounding sewer lines in the area revealed no further infrastructure issues. Something else that came up back in November, TCLT Community Concerns. A resident expressed concerns regarding the water delivery system leaking for a few years. It was discussed during the meeting that the Board of Water Supply supplies no water to the area, which seemed to not be understood. Will there be any availability to address this issue to the public? And response from Board of Water is that they have been working with the Homeowners Association for TCLT for the past two years and continue to work with them and have a meeting being set up with their association president, Mr. David Tupper later this month. Gentry built the subdivision and chose to have a master meter with sub-meters to all the homeowners. BWS charges the association based on the master meter readings only. After the master meter, it is the responsibility of the Homeowners Association to manage water use and repair leaks in the system. Board of Water does not own the water system within the subdivision. It is owned by the association. Thank you for your inquiry. If there are additional questions, you can contact, well, yeah, anybody can contact Kathleen Pahinui. She is Board of Water's Public Information Officer. And her number is 808-748-5319 or via email at kellykeliet-pahinui@hbws.org. Next concern from November, Tenney Village School Traffic. A resident wanted to address the traffic issues caused by school concluding. School concluding, she needed to tend to an emergency home. School concluding. She needed to tend to an emergency home. Along Renton Road in front of Eva Elementary School, parents are waiting to get parents are waiting to pull into the roundabout even when school has yet to be dismissed. It was stated that the traffic was observed to be backed up until at least the nearby seven eleven. Another observation was a car getting onto the curb to drive past the traffic. Is there anything that can be done to prevent traffic safety issues like this? D T S will conduct the site observation and inform the board of their findings by the April twenty twenty four board meeting. Okay, so April. Another street parking issues, Ho'ono Street. A resident expressed concerns and frustration frustrations regarding the parking along Ho'ono Street. Cars are parked on both sides of the street, causing congestion on the street when vehicles are coming from either direction. So there are several concerns, but I'm gonna provide the response that D T S's investigation found that Ho'ono Street is still privately held and not under the jurisdiction of the city and county of Honolulu at this time. As such, this concern should be referred to the developer or to the association. And those are all the concerns I had from back in November. Are there any questions?
Any question from the board for Kehau? Any question for the community for the Mayor's Rep? I do. We got one online, two.
I got one.
Jane, Greenland, go ahead, Jane.
Well, Chair, Board members, I just wanted to follow up with regard to the signs that are in the sidewalk on Papi P Road. Again, very unsafe road for kids to get to and from school. One side of the road has no sidewalk or a place to go. There's no bike route for kids to ride, so they're gonna be on the sidewalks, and those signs are causing problems. Those signs need to come out, please. Thank you.
You know which one you're talking about, right, Kehau? Okay, John, you got something?
Yeah, I can. I have two things, one manini and one a little bit bigger. The mini one in front of a sing park. If the grass that the grass area between the sidewalk and road, I know that's state, but everyone else along that corridor, all the other owners, the Westlock Elderly, Westlock Fairways and the other Westlock Estates, we all cut that strip because it never gets cut. And I'm just asking if the parks, the folks who cut the the other part, the between the rock wall and the sidewalk, if they can also cut that thin little strip because the grass will get like three feet high before the contractor for the state comes out. I don't know what's going on if there is even a contractor, but it's just a little irritating thing. I, you know, everyone else is doing their cutting and and it would be great if you, if the city could cut that part also. And then the second thing is the the Westlock Shoreline Park, the the shared use path between both the Leeward Bike Way in Eva and then the one starting in Waipahu, that is that a city, city property hasn't been maintained since like the late eighties, nineteen eighties when it was built. And with the Leeward Bike Way being built, it's gonna be completed in mid twenty twenty four. That's gonna be a major section, two, two and a half mile section of the Leeward Bike Way that is just in horrible condition. And I just want to ask the mayor or the administration if they plan on doing any maintenance to that two and a half mile corridor because it's way overdue. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, Kehau.
No, no, thank you. Mahalo, John.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Kehau.
Mahalo.
Okay, moving on to Councilmember District One, Councilmember Tupolo.
Hi, Chair. It's Kika Tupenny, Representative for Councilmember Tupolo's Office. Councilmember sends her regrets for not attending tonight. But we don't have anything to report for this month, but we're open for any questions or concerns.
Any questions for the Councilwoman from the board? From the community? Oh, who? Nothing online. Thank you. Seeing none. Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Moving on to Councilmember District Nine, Agitoba.
Thank you, Chair. Happy New Year, everyone. Happy New Year, board. Happy New Year, people in the audience, anybody watching online. The council's budget season will be starting up again in March. The mayor will be submitting his budget to the council and we'll begin the council hearings on the budget in two months. So as part of the budget, council members are, will be submitting capital improvement projects, you know, so if anyone has a request, has the time to email me. Last year, the office put in requests for Ula, Oniula and a sing park. So if you guys have any recommendations for C I P requests, please let me know. I'll be putting together lists for consideration for the next two months. I'm excited to report that the film studio bill, Bill fifty nine twenty twenty three passed out in budget. The bill creates a tax exemption for the construction of a film studio on Oahu. The bill will, the bill, as it's written, the tax exemption would apply to improvements on the land or the building, but the land would be taxable. Bill fifty nine moves forward to full council on second reading. The next full council meeting is on Wednesday, January twenty fourth. If anyone is interested in learning more about Bill fifty nine and really incentivizing developing a new industry here in Hawaii, giving local people good jobs, living wage jobs, please love to meet, discuss and talk. My office is planning our next cleanup for Saturday, February seventeenth on Nord Road. It's from eight to ten A M. If we'll be meeting in front of the LDS Church. Please reach out to my office if you have any ideas for the new year or concerns. You can always email me at atoba@honolulu.gov or you can call my office, seven six eight five zero zero nine. And with that, I will take questions.
Okay, we got two from the board. Alex, and then we got Liam.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thanks for your report. I get, it's actually a question for you and if Kehau's still there, maybe between the two of them, I was with the C I P project. So as we know, that the successful C I P project for Oniula Beach Park and that those funds were released by the mayor, and that's for the design of comfort stations. And I'm gonna report on that in the Parks Committee report quickly, briefly, but I was just wondering, when we're talking about timing, should we be putting in a C I P for the subsequent phase? So right now, we're we're trying to get funds or we have the funds for the planning, right? And so does it make sense to put that in now for for the actual construction and hedge our bets just in case that is an option?
Well, you know, you know how things work. We have C I P projects that's been on the books now for what, four, eight, even some as far as twelve years. I would, you know, that way, if in case it laps, we know we have it, you know, on record.
Can you put a C I P for that? I'll contact you.
Liam, go ahead.
Oh, and just you might have said it, but for people that doesn't, don't know the alphabet soup, C I P is capital improvement projects. I just try to, myself included, I always try to just say it out loud first. And I just to kind of follow up on what Alex said, can you, can you educate the community and us from your experience, from the point a request goes in for a capital improvement project? For example, down at the beach park here, we're talking about a new roof and so forth. Just because it gets on the list doesn't mean it's actually gonna get funded, doesn't mean it's gonna happen. As a guy that's worked in government, can you tell people what they need to do subsequently to make sure it becomes a reality and not just something on a list for years?
Well, first, you know, getting involved in the neighborhood board is one way, you know, we can, we can it is the, you know, Mayor has his priorities and we gotta make sure that he is, he's hearing it and that the needs of the community out here in Eva is asking for things. So, I mean, any way the community can get involved and come into the neighborhood board and asking, right? So that's the three years that I've been here. Full or roof was asked three years ago. So and I know there's a project on Renton Road that was done, was asked when Councilmember Menoir was the city councilman. So it takes time. But I think we have a really good community and we have an excellent neighborhood board. So I think with us all working together, kind of like what we're doing with Nord Road, with John Clark, and I think we can try to at least push the issue, yeah?
Okay, I was just gonna quickly follow up and say, I think it would be helpful if we as a board members can created a list of all the community improvement projects that are been on the list forever, for Eva. Put it up here, present it to the community and say, hey, folks, this is what we've asked for. They've never actually gotten into reality. Here are the people at the city you could email and advocate to, to get it through. So what do you think of that?
I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tara, you got something? Go ahead.
Get one quick question. Could you clarify again regarding that new film industry, that studio? Do you have any information? Do you know where it's planned to be built or anything?
The bill is just to incentivize in case. It's given, basically, you know, we are first, it's the first time ever that the city is putting skin in the game to help that industry because we saw with the pandemic that, you know, we cannot rely always on tourism, construction, military. So this is another way of just kind of helping the industry grow in hopes that we can tell our story.
Mahalo.
Thank you.
And being an extra pays pretty good.
Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, one one follow up question, could you jog my memory when you mentioned it? So the North Road, the task for side, my understanding is that you and John Clark met with some people?
Yeah, we met with the golf course and we have a couple ideas. We know from the last hearing that to construct sidewalks so that along that road, one, it's a private road, but the estimated cost, cost from what I got was like somewhere between eight and ten million.
For the side, for the sidewalk.
Sidewalks, yeah. And if it's not improved, the city won't, you know, take over it. So there's some ideas that we're working through and I'm hoping that we can have more meetings so that we can, you know, make this, you know, on a safety concern, right? Because we know there's a lot of students that walk, walk along the Nord Road.
So if you could involve John Rogers and I as part of the Transportation Committee as well, and and I think we just love to be involved. I know you and John Clark have done some good stuff. I was obviously on the task force as well, so we'd just like to be a part of that as well. That'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Border Water Supply. Anyone? Okay. Moving on to Department of Education. Anybody? Okay, nobody. Moving on to Governor's Rep. Was that Perry? All right, go ahead, Perry.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Aloha. So I just threw into the chat the link as always to the Governor's Office. Just a quick update in terms of important dates for this month. The seventeenth will mark the opening of the legislature, which is when all of the legislators, our elected representatives and senators come together for for what what's effectively the second half of this legislative session, or rather, for the second half of this legislature. We have two legislative sessions for every legislature. And as a part of this second half of our legislature, the governor will be introducing his proposals on January twenty second through the State of the State address. So the administration is currently working very hard to prepare all the bills that the governor is gonna propose as part of that address. As the opening. If you have any questions, I encourage you to check out the governor's website. It has a lot of great information. Otherwise, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
You kind of froze the last ten seconds.
Oh, that's just, that's just the part when I say that I'm I'm happy to take questions. So.
Okay, thank you, Perry. Any questions for the governor from the board? From the community? Seeing none. Thank you, Perry.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Hawaii Department of Transportation. Is it their quarterly report yet? Wait, it's on? Nothing yet. Okay, moving on. Senate District nineteen, Senator Aquino, any representative?
Aloha, can anyone hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Aloha, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Members of the Community. My name is Nathaniel Isay, and I will be representing Senator Aquino this evening. Furthermore, I do stand by my report. Thank you.
Any question for Senator Aquino from the board? From the community? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Senate District twenty, Senator Kurt Fivella. Okay, he's not on. Okay, go ahead, Alex.
I just wanted to share with the the members in attendance here that Senator Fivella did. So just going back to the whole lead testing on on that was done in the community surrounding the the range and and the unwillingness of Representative Martinez and her staff to release the results of those tests. So they said they were positive, but no one knows in the community actually what levels of lead were detected in those tests. And I just want to recognize that Senator Fivella sent a letter to her office asking for those results to be released to the public because they were paid for with public funds. And they once again refused to do so following same same as when I, when we follow, we asked them for the results and so did some reporters. So I just wanted to recognize Fivella for sending that letter. We appreciate it and also acknowledging that Rose Martinez's office continues to refuse to release those results.
Okay. I guess if Senator comes on, we can get his report. Moving on to Senate District twenty one, Senator Mike Gabbert. Any representative?
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Okay, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and Honorable Members. I'm Nanuk Dini, Senator Gabbert's community liaison, and I want to say Happy New Year on behalf of the Senator. I was having technical difficulties earlier, so sorry I don't have my camera on. This Senator Gabbert, Chair of the Senate Agriculture and Environment Committee, held a joint informational briefing today with his counterpart in the House, Rep Nicole Lowen, who chairs the Energy and Environmental Protection Committee on the urgency of climate change. You can view the entire hearing on YouTube by searching Hawaii State Senate. I'll drop the links in the chat for YouTube and the Senators' November and December newsletter once I get off the call. On opening, just wanted to talk about opening day, it'll be January seventeenth. Senator Gabbert invites you to stop by between twelve and two P M for poo-poos and to help him kick off the twenty twenty four session. And lastly, Senator invites everyone to mark your calendar and join his first Listen Story Community Meeting of the Year on Saturday, January twenty seventh from nine A M to ten A M at the Kapolei High School Teachers Lounge or on Zoom. If you'd like to RSVP for the Listen Story, you can send us an email at sendgabbard at capital.hawaii.gov, and I can drop that in the chat as well. To view recordings of his past Listen Stories, you can visit the Senator's YouTube page at youtube.com/senatormikegabbard. I'll drop all this info in the chat as well. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions back to the Senator.
Thank you. Any questions for the Senator from the board? From the community? Seeing none, I got two. One, what is his TikTok number? And two, we would like to invite the Senator to come here, but when he comes here, bring his toffee as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Moving on. Moving on to Representative District thirty nine, Elijah Peric. Thank you.
Aloha, my name is Naomi. Peric can be here tonight, and so I'm just here for him. There's nothing major to report, but he wanted me to share some of the things that he's been doing in the community. He was very active in volunteering and providing counseling with Hope Chapel Maui to provide pastoral counseling to the Maui Fire victims in conjunction with the Food Pantry, as well as partnering with nonprofits to donate money to victims of the Maui Fires. And also things And also things in the communities like cleaning up litter on the Kuniya H1 exit and participating in a diaper drive for young families. And so, yeah, he's just been, he's very passionate about this community and, yeah. So that's all I have to share for now.
Any questions for Representative from the board? From the community? Okay, one, Naomi, real quick, do you know that where the? I was gonna say, does his district start and end?
Vaguely. I grew up in Eva and I know that the To'opili and Kuniya and, yeah. I also just recently started working for him, so I'm becoming more familiar with where the boundaries of his district are.
Okay, okay. All right. Go ahead, Cory. Now all the way to To'opili?
It's part of To'opili, Kuniya, part of Waipahu, part of Waikeli.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Naomi. Okay, moving on. District 40, Representative Rose Martinez. Any rep? Nope. Okay, moving on. Senate District 41, David Alcos.
Aloha, Happy New Year. Chair, Board Members. Community, I like pull up my phone, not coming out right now. Hold on. In the last couple of weeks or months, we've been doing a survey out in the community, you know, to see how is crime doing or are you? So I just want to kind of update you on the survey that we put out in our community. So the first one that we put out, should legislature recreational marijuana, like should we make marijuana legal? So I did that survey out in our, in our community in District 41. 62% said, no, they don't want it. 30% said, yes, they want it. And 7% said they didn't, they didn't know if they should legalize marijuana. Why I bring that up? Marijuana is a big topic this year in our community, in our state, that they're going to be trying to legalize marijuana. And this is what District 41 survey came out at. Next one had, how do you feel about currently, how do you feel about crime? 70% said, crime is too soft. 23% says it's fair. And 5% was tough. And 2% was blank. So those are issues there. And we went and do a campaign all over the island. Those are kind of like the big issues that, you know, same results that we've been getting, crime was soft all over the island. And the police trying to do their work with the homeless or with crime and they're back on the street. We do need tougher crime. We are putting in bills out there right now. So in January, we'll be finalizing all our bills to set in to try to make time tougher. So if you guys do have any ideas or any things that you guys want to put in or try to introduce, this is the best time now to introduce it before January, I mean, to the end of January, that we can get all your bills in fact by this week. How do you feel? Did you ever think about moving to the mainland? Is another survey that we did. 67% said, yes, they felt the cost of living was too high. And this is like, again, this survey was only done in District 41. 31% said, no, they didn't want to move. And 2% was blank. So those are the surveys that we got. Like I said, there's, there's a lot of things that we've been doing in our community, working with the traffic, safety, trying to secure funds. On District 41, we secured $61 million. And out in the community, a lot of them went to Kapalei, I mean, to Kailua Airport. But, and then we also did with City and County, the $2.7 million, trying to get our bathroom renovation, our bathroom and park renovation at Oniola Beach Park. So we get, trying to do the plan and permitting. So there's a lot of funds that we got on the CIP money, but then again, like Augie said, we might not get them to spend out this year. But we still got to push on them and our community needs to continue. We can do as legislature's request, but the community got to step involved and help out to finish that. Push it through and let the mayor spend the money. So we do need you guys' support and help. But other than that, you know, I'm here for some questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? We got Liam and Cory and then the community. Go ahead.
Thanks, Representative Alcos. Appreciate it. Couple of super quick ones. Can you, are we able to see a copy of that survey?
Yes.
We'd like, yeah, love to see it. And then can you, the cannabis legalization statistic or survey result, could you repeat that, please?
Yes. 62% in my community said, no, they don't want legalized marijuana. And 37, 30.77% says, yes, they want to legalize marijuana.
Great, thank you. And how many people did you survey? I'm curious.
I sent a mailer out to every household.
Every household, okay. Yeah, we'd love to see the results if you, if you could share those. Thank you.
So I do have a flyer that is coming out to District 41, but I'll bring another flyer here and show you the results.
Yeah, with, with the numbers of people who responded and so forth. Would love to see that. Thanks so much.
Yep.
Okay, Cory, go ahead.
So just following up on that one, do you know how many respond that you had for that one?
I have to follow up on that. I'll get back with you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Come up to the mic, state your question.
Aloha, Tara Rojas. I have a question, you know, since the results of the lead testing, you know, from the Rose Martinez office has not been released, it just dawned on me as I was sitting there, I was like, you know, would it be possible for your, you know, office and or any other office? I don't know exactly how it works. Would anybody, any other rep be willing to do the testing if that is feasible?
Sure, I'll look into that.
Aloha, Kelly Nikahal. I'm appreciative of your survey. I am not for recreational marijuana, one thing. And, and the only reason why is I do manage a clean and sober home in this area. And it's very hard to manage that home when you having guys coming home when the policy is you, you cannot come home if you, if you unclean. And we do have the right to piss tests, hair follicles, everything you name it. But then it creates a problem for us because then now they become houseless. So I wouldn't recommend that. But I do recommend for the medical side, because we do have men in the home that do need that. Some of them are dialysis, some of them are medic, you know, they have issues with their bodies. So they do have their green card. So I would push for the medical, the medical side. That's, that's what I, I would push for. I also would push for if somehow the insurance could help pay for that. You know, because these, you know, and there's other ways. They don't got to go up in flames either. They can take it in with the mushrooms and other stuff besides that. I'm just, I'm just giving an example because I do have people that have, have seen marijuana hurt their bodies, but the, but the outcome of the mushrooms have helped them even better. So I, I thank you for that and I wanted to share that with you folks because it, I would not promote recreational marijuana. Mahalo.
Go ahead.
Aloha, Mr. Alcos. I just first want to say mahalo for all you do and trying to lessen the crime over here in our community. One of the things that I just want to give my input on what I feel could better assist and help with deterring the crime in the community is just basically us being a community, you know what I mean? If you see an old man walking across the street, help him out. You see somebody snatching a lady's purse, catch them. You know what I mean? I've noticed a lot of times in our community, people like bust out the phone. You know what I mean? Nobody like be active and actually want to involve themselves. And, you know, growing and being born and raised in Ever Beach, I noticed that there's no aloha. You know, like people don't look at each other no more, you know, there's shakas on the, on the road anymore. Just the dynamics of who we are as a community is changing. And I noticed that a lot of our hammers that kept the community safe, they're either in jail or, you know, or they died or they'll move Vegas, like my brother Flex, Fuengatoyololo. So I feel like we just need to call all our hammers to the forefront, be more active in our community. And if you guys see something wrong, do something. That goes with all the people watching today and everybody in the audience. Mahalo.
I agree with you 100%. And HPD also agree with you as talking to Roland. Roland said our community needs to step in more.
Go ahead.
Aloha, Rep. How you doing?
Good.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
The legislative session starts next Wednesday. Are you planning anything? And is, other than the recent installment of metal detectors or gun detectors or whatever the hell they, they're calling them, are there any other restrictions going to be put on the people to go in and visit you at your office? And if you don't know, maybe Representative Diamond Garcia knows since he's a little further closer to the top of the rung.
Yeah, I don't think there's any restrictions on metal detectors or anything right now. We did have a bomb threat and so many other states had as well. But right now, there's no restriction. But that is a talk that we want to make the capitals more safe and I see if we can get the capital be more safe as well. But on January 17th, Diamond, was it? Is our opening? You guys are all welcome to come over and happy to see my community out there and make lunch or something. Come on.
Liam, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to Representative Alcos, some of your priorities for this session. You said one of them, you know, was get tough on crime. But I was taking note when the earlier, but from our friends from HPD, when they gave their updates earlier, one of the things that stuck out is he said, we have plenty of laws. We don't need any more laws. We need to enforce the ones we have. We need to make sure that, you know, judges are not letting repeat offenders out. That, that the structure is there, the system that we need, the laws are very clear. So I'm not so sure when I think about HPD themselves, who are on the front line saying that, I think it's important to listen to it. And then I also think it's important that we think about the root causes of crime. And I think what our friend said here earlier is important that we need to find a balance about these kind of people that think it's more lucrative to steal purses. Typically, people with living wage jobs aren't out there committing crimes. It's just a fact. And so my work from a lot of my career is to go upstream as far as possible, help these youth, help these typically young men get their lives on track, get them job training, you know, get them, get them mentor programs. Because we got to balance punishment with investing in our communities. Because the communities that are safest are not the ones with the most police and prisons. They're the ones with the most resources.
Thank you. I can answer. So one of the bills that we're, are thinking of is like, you know, like there's homeless out there, right? And we're drafting up the bills right now. And let's say there's a homeless right in front, the door, right over here, end up sleeping right, right in front of the door. Sheesh, she using the bathroom all over here, making it dirty. Then the other homeless is by the park by the tree, which one is, both of them is going to be homeless. And, but I think that one by blocking public access that we cannot use or where we, where we at should be handling more stiffer penalties and make it be like a felony or some, some kind of thing that what's, what's happening out there? Make a tougher crime for them instead of just being, being the same as the guy right by the tree as a homeless situation, you know? Some kind of idea to make it harder for them and, and charge them with something.
You have one more? Okay, go ahead.
So my question is, is it really crime or is it mental, mental illness or mental health an issue? Because the position that, that I hold and what I'm doing right now in this space capacity, while I've been doing it for a while, I've seen a lot of men, men come in and come out of the homes like rapid. And it's really based, majority is, is drugs and majority is mental health. So maybe we got to look at the law that requires us either as a community or a family member because it's, we either got to force them to get help by law so that we can take care of their mental beings so that the crime rate goes down as well as, because they're going, they're going to be feening for this crack. And then they're going, they know more money, they're going to feen and then they're going to steal, then they're going to kill. You know, so that's, that's how, that's the harder rotation. So maybe if we can make that suggestion of looking into the mental health law. Because where I stand in, in the space I am in the, in the home that I, I manage, I, I cry. I'm sorry. I don't mean for take up space, but it's just I cry for these people.
Yeah, I agree 100% with you. And I just addressing the community concerns and the survey that I'm taking, trying to address tougher.
And I, I get one. I think the officer Roland was talking about is that, and what Liam was talking about is I think the, the laws are there, but just the prosecution, they're not, you know, oh, cannot, you know, this, this felony not too bad, we'll let them go overcrowding. You know, it has to, the prosecutor's got to prosecute. And they, and then like Senator was talking about a geographical restriction. You know, if they have multiple, I guess, not fines, but arrest in, in this community. You know, you're going to be jail time, you know, they're going to O triple C, they're going to go halawa or to like, they're talking about the, you know, mental health plate, wherever they got to go, but they cannot keep coming back to the community and doing this. I mean, say Moleca was talking about, we, if we see the crime, we got to step up and do them. But I, I, we've been asking all of that, but now we step up, stop the stuff, get into an altercation. Now we the bad guy.
Yeah, we.
We going to get arrested.
Yeah.
We get stuff.
Or her life is on the line.
Yeah.
Where we get family.
But kind of hard, we're going to do that anyway, but just it, it kind of backs fires on the people that want to help and do that. But.
A last one, I just want to shout out to City and County and our Parks Team. Our grass is looking green all over the island. The rain, you know me, I'm a park guy. Our grandkids always out there on the field and look what water do to our community. Amazing. Thank you.
Okay, one more question. Liam, go ahead.
And just, I appreciate this dialogue and I hope we can continue it because it's such an important issue, not here, but every major populated area in the country. Have you, you guys heard of the CORE program in Honolulu run by the city and county? So CORE, instead of sending police when the guy is going sheesh on the door, they, they send a mental health worker and an EMT. And what those EMTs do is they show up, they de-escalate it and then they take them in. One, find them housing. Two, find them treatment. If they need mental health treatment, they need substance abuse treatment, really get at the root cause. Because throwing these guys in jail, they just come right back out, right? So let's actually get, get at, at the root. So what I'm going to be working on as a member of the Public Safety Committee here is to get the City and County of Honolulu to expand the CORE program out here to Eva. Because when we call 911 or we call for somebody, if it doesn't require necessarily a gun and a badge, we could get these guys out there that could meet these folks where they're at, get them housing, get them treatment and really get to the root of it. So I'll be working on that and updating you as we go.
Thank you. I also been working with the state on the homeless program out in our community to develop homes for our homeless out here. So we did try to look for lands and trying to find some areas. So we constantly working, they just went change the director of it, of the homeless chair on it. So we're still working with Mazuno now. So we've been on that every other week or so.
Last one, go ahead, Jenny.
Mitch, I'm going to address to you, right? I wanted to see, since we have Rep Alcos and I know Rep Garcia is here too, for homeless prevention, for this is on totally on the opposite side. We have people that are in our low income housing and they risk of being homeless because they're doing too well. Like they start making more money and then they are in an in-between place where they can't really get into, afford the rent, the regular rents that's going on in our community. And then they are almost punished for getting themselves into a higher income level. And then they are forced to be evicted from the low income housing. And then they are forced to be evicted from the low income housing. Is there anything that we can do to look into um the low income housings that we do have out here? We need more, but anything we can do to look into this, like, I don't know what the solution would be, giving them more time to be able to save up, to actually get to a place where they can actually have a deposit to get out of the housing and into regular housing, things like this, like prevention of people who are actually working and trying to, to be good members of society and not trying to be homeless. You know what I mean? Thank you.
Okay, as lawmakers, we should change that, you know? And we need to propose more higher cap to them so that they can afford so, but it starts with us and we start with the community supporting us. So check us out online or check us out at the Capitol or call us. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Representative District Forty-two, Representative Diamond Garcia. Oh, save the best for last, huh? Here we go, here we go.
I was like, well, I'll be quick because then we're all tired. Happy New Year first and foremost, as was mentioned by the three or four previous speakers. Next week, Wednesday is opening day at the Capitol. So I would encourage all of you to just stop by for uh, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, uh, see your, your, your rep and Senator and remind them that they work for you. Uh, we are indeed public servants. Uh, a few things, there's some handouts here. Um, we did also run a survey in District Two, we're wrapping it up right now. So you got, your, your, your results already, where have, I think for ours, there's about uh two weeks left to go to uh complete the survey. And so there is a QR code there uh for, for my office to take the survey. Those same questions are there and uh my results are kind of similar to what Rep Alcos reported. So far, we, we've got a few hundred people respond so far. And about, about sixty-five percent is against a legalizing recreational marijuana. So that is a big topic of, of uh discussion this session at the Capitol. I'm hearing so far, you know, last year it, it passed the Senate, it died in the House. This year it looks like uh the governor is working with House members to try and get that through. The AG's office sent a recreational marijuana bill uh that is quite controversial. And just to clarify, because I did hear some of the conversation earlier, medical marijuana is already legal here in Hawaii. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's all legal and there's lots of arguments in favor of legalizing it with its uses uh in medicine and for health purposes. So that's already legal here in Hawaii. The conversation is should we legalize it recreationally like smoking a cigarette uh in public? So that's that conversation. If you have a particular opinion on that, come down to the legislature and make your voice known, let them know how you feel. I think uh one thing we've seen time and time again is there's lots of controversial bills that come through on, on average, three thousand per year at the Capitol. And yet very few people come and testify. And so lots of bad bills pass all the time and no one is there to say, yes, I support it, I'm against it. And so there's lots of tax increases, more regulations that hurt our, our local businesses. So please come down, testify, that building is your building, your taxes pay for the lights there, pays our salary, so use it. Thank you, Chair. Any questions?
Any question for the board? We got one, Alex, anybody else?
Hey, thank you, uh Representative, um, I, I second that notion about test, you know, testifying. I think one, one big thing, I think a challenge that I've noticed as a board member, that's really hard to know when bills that are, are, are relevant to our, our region, oftentimes it's hard to know that they're coming across. So I, I would ask that our representatives, you and everyone else that's spoken, actually, you know, tell us about those and really keep us informed and urge us so we know when those things are happening to go out there and do it, because oftentimes we do not. And I'm speaking for the public in general, right? So I, I, I agree with you totally. And if you could help with that trans, that communication, I appreciate it.
For sure. Thank you, yes. Uh, and so please go to rep Garcia dot com and sign up, give me your, your email address and during session we'll send out weekly updates of what bills are being heard, which ones are being voted on. It's kind of hard because there's a forty-eight hour notice for a bill hearing, so anyway.
Go ahead.
Hi, Diamond. Um, do you think that, I know that medical marijuana is um legal. Do you think that um the people that do need it can have more information? Because I had a man that didn't know that his um doctor was able to get it for him. Cause people, that kind of information did it, I didn't know either until he said, I want my hundred ninety dollars back. But anyway, but you know, the thing is, if we could give that kind of information out because a lot of them don't know.
Yeah.
And um if, if they don't talk, and a lot of it is the doctors won't just ask, you know, or tell them, because they don't know if, what the patient would want.
Yeah.
So maybe if there's something that, you know, uh, communication wise, you know, like when we go to the doctor and the insurance or something, something that within our laws can say, the insurance will help you pay for these things. You know, like how we get med, you know, you know, RX pills, maybe a bag or something, chocolate, I don't know. Sorry, I don't know. I'm sorry, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Now, I agree, I mean, I, I, I have the opinion, which isn't always popular, but I believe that there are lots of better options to treat people besides uh pharmaceutical drugs. And I think medical marijuana is one of that. And I think if, if we can expand access to medical marijuana here in Hawaii, that's a good thing actually, than having people rely on other stuff, so, yeah.
Any other questions? None? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, awesome, awesome. Thank you. Oh, sorry Chair. And last thing, uh just three weeks ago, one hundred thousand dollars released for East Kapolei High School. Good news, thank you.
Nice. Thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Okay, Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, for the Parks Committee, so I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on a couple of things that were mentioned here tonight. Um, so there, there were two CIP uh efforts put in place, one by Representative, uh, by Councilmember Tolba and the other by Tupola. Those were combined in a, in a total of two point seven million were allocated for Puuloa Beach, uh, uh, O'Neale Beach Park. I just want to clarify the, for the community and, and those here, right? Like so, that's an amount that was allocated, but in fact, only um, I think it's eight hundred thousand is for design development of the actual design for what we want. And so that, and, and looking at timelines of how things are actually spent, that's probably the only thing that's going to be able to occur within the, the fiscal year. And that's the only money that's going to be, be spent. But that's, that's why I was asking that question earlier about do we put in for the next, the next step, right? And so I just want everyone to be aware of that. And so what we did was um, so I met myself, John Rogers, who's my co-chair on the, on the Parks Committee, we met with uh, with David Alcos down at the park. And um, we, we had a meeting also with Kayhow and, and several others on the phone, but then we went, actually went down there and we, we looked at priorities. So when we're designing, the comfort station in the, in the middle of, of O'Neale Beach Park is the number one priority. But we also spoke about picnic areas with pavilions, uh, you know, a, a park for the keiki and some exercise equipment, things of that nature. And then we submitted those priorities to Kayhow, who is then passing that on to planning. So under that scenario, our understanding is that we're not clear on what priorities will be included in the design that, that we currently have funding for. But the, the cool thing is, is that, that design is moving forward and at the very least it will include the priority number one, which is the comfort station. But hopefully it'll include some of these other priorities. So as we, as we get more information, obviously I'll share that and I'm sure our representatives will as well. And I, and we'll be setting up a, our, we had our first re-initiation of quarterly parks meetings last year, I think it was November. And so we'll be setting one up towards the end of this month or, or in February. And so I invite any of those interested to attend as well. Thank you. Uh, John, did you want to add something?
Sure, sure. There's a, a new organization in town, they, they had their second meeting, they're called the uh Board of Parks and Recreation. It's a really uh great group that's put together, Parks Department put together. And this next meeting is January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, one to three PM. You just go to the www.honolulu.govparks and you'll find, you'll find the Board of Parks, you know, you'll see it and you'll find their agenda. Um, but I, it's, this is, they're, they're going to do some great things in the future about planning, uh, developing a maintenance plan for our parks and uh, it's still so new, it's a second meeting. So unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town, so I won't be able to go. Uh, so someone else wants to go. And then, and then um I'm collecting um, uh, if you can find my email on, on the NCO website, um, I'm collecting uh what people think are exceptional trees. An exceptional tree is uh trees, uh, is the tree, um, what is an exceptional tree? Skinner's apple trees. So exceptional tree is just anything culturally old. So take for instance, the, the uh, the uh Banyan tree on Renton Road across from the um high school there. That's a beautiful, big, big, uh, it's a big tree too, it's part. But anyway, so if you know of any exceptional trees, please um contact me uh through email and I'd like to look at it and submit a nomination to the city and county to get that tree on the list. The why, the reason why this has come in my mind is because Eva and Kapolei, we don't have any exceptional trees on the list. It's everywhere else, so on the island. So I think it's time that Eva gets a tree on the list. Um, and uh, that's, that's all I have.
Any other committee reports, anyone?
Transportation.
Okay, transportation, go ahead.
Uh, Act uh twenty twenty-three, Act one hundred report is out uh on the HDOT website. It's a really important uh document about all the things that HDOT has done in the last year, all the, all the work that's been happening in the transportation system. So uh, if you're interested in that kind of stuff, uh, take a look at that, uh, the H, it's Act one hundred, it's a bylaw, they have to report to the legislature, all the things they're, they have done. And then um also just to let you know, there's six million dollars in the budget that the feds gave the city and the state, they're working together, three million this year, three million next year to develop, design a uh bike path from Diamond Head to Makaha. So not just a bike path, a shared use path, a connecting, connecting from Diamond Head to uh Makaha, it'll be different kinds of path. That's what this whole, that's why they're doing the development. And then OMPO, I'll just talk about OMPO. We, we, we re-elected our Chair Kathleen Rooney, she's great, uh, she's a smart person. And um, and right now you can um comment on the tip for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five, tip is transportation um information project. It's a state document, um, and it's got some, it's an amendment. Uh, don't worry about it, has nothing to do with Eva or Kapolei, but if you're interested in those transportation things, take a, a look at it at the OMPO, O-M-P-O, Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization website. Thank you.
Alex, you got something else?
Yeah, just one quick follow-up that I admitted when I was giving the Parks report um that, that Councilmember Tolba and Tupola also put in for funds for uh the design and development of a roof for the Puuloa Beach Park. And so um those funds actually haven't been released by the mayor, so the ones for Eva, O'Neale Beach Park have, but those have not. And so what we need are some letters and I, I, you know, I've been mentioning this in the past as well, but I, I've writ, I'm writing a letter, I have it right now, ready to go. If there are other people that can write a letter, even just one or two people literally will make a big difference. So my, my email is also on the, 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 uh, the board website, it's available there. If you're interested in writing a letter, it can just be a short one, a paragraph or something, please let me know and we, and I'll help you develop it and we can send it to the mayor's office. So that they'll release those funds and we can actually start designing that as well. And then when we have two, our two primary beach parks here in Eva Beach, we'll be getting some major improvements, would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other committee reports? Seeing none? Okay, we're going to move on to announcements. Next regular board meeting scheduled for Thursday, February eighth, seven PM. Uh, virtual webex and in-person in Eva Beach Public Library here. Regular board meetings are broadcast every first Sunday at six PM and every second and fourth Friday at ten AM on Olelo Digital forty-nine. Thank you for everybody coming. Mahalo for everybody coming.